Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for Monday, September 26th. I call the meeting to order and ask that you stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Russell.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anna, could you please do the roll call?
Chair DiErcle is absent. Vice Chair Zick?
Here.
Commissioner Rojas?
Here.
Commissioner Toller?
Here.
Commissioner Russell?
Here.
Commissioner Vivar?
Here.
Commissioner Erith?
Present.
Thank you, Anna. We have no presentations tonight, but we do have an announcement, Ms. Lee.
Thank you. I just want to take a brief moment this evening to introduce a new staff member to the Commission. Her name is Pai Von. She's joining the City of Costa Mesa from the County of Riverside. We're very happy to have her. She's joining us in our principal planner role, which, as you know, is a very important role to the function of our department. So I'd like to ask her to come up to the podium and just make a brief statement. And thank you, Pai Von, and welcome to the team.
Thank you, Jennifer, for the great introduction. Again, my name is Pai Von, Nantavong Duan C. If you ever forget how to pronounce my name, I always tell people, "You buy a pie from Von's." And I'm very excited to be here. This is a great opportunity, and I look forward to serving our community at any capacity needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And welcome to the city. That takes us to public comments. Public comments will be heard at this time on any item that's not on our agenda tonight. I'll open public comment. If you'd like to speak, please come forward to the podium. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand if you want to speak. And if you're on the phone, please press star nine if you'd like to be recognized. And we'll start with you, ma'am.
My name's Wendy Samo, and I just came to thank whoever went out to Gym 12 at 1:40, Seventeenth Street at 8:30 in the morning on Saturday and completely shut up the gym. I actually got to sleep past 5:30 this morning. Thank you. So whenever this CUP is up in July of 2023, are we going to reevaluate the CUP to make sure the gym can never do this to our community again? And are they going to stay quiet? It's my main question now. You know, I mean, they've been quiet for two days, but it's been two years. So, and that was it. I was just coming to say thank you, and hopefully it keeps up.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm just waiting for them to load my presentation. I'm Jay Humphrey, Costa Mesa resident. Good evening, Commission. Good to have you guys here. Thank you. To clear up a problem, to clear up a problem with numbers, I decided that we need to have, I need to talk to you guys a bit. Costa Mesa currently has a housing stock, per the Costa Mesa website, of 43,532 dwelling units, whether that's a one-bedroom apartment or a 27-room house. It doesn't make any, that's the number, 43,500. And the state, in their RINA, which is the regional housing assessment, needs assessment, has stipulated that Costa Mesa needs to be making at least in low and very low-income properties 4,713 units, new units in Costa Mesa between now and 2029. So just for, we've got those numbers down. Inclusionary housing ordinances around the state, and I've looked at, seem to have a number of things involved with them, but they seem to all require somewhere between 5% and 15% at below-market rate cost of housing. There's what's called median, which is another 2,000 housing units to this number, but we'll use the 4,713. Other things they have is they convert other controlled units into below-market rate housing units. That's one of the incentives other cities use. And another one is they extend the deed restriction for rather than 30 years, or 25 to 50 to 60 years. And that's one way they do it. Of course, that means there's no new units. They just extend the number of units, the time requirement on the number of units to get that done. And/or they can use to pay an in-lu fee, which also does not give us any new units. Wow. So what I looked at, if Costa Mesa uses the biggest number that's out there right now, 15%, and you just do the math, it comes out with 31,420 new housing units. Unfortunately, at the council meeting, I said 33,000. So I apologize for the incorrect number, the difference between 33,000 and 31,400. So what that really means is that you would wind up by having to come up with an increase in housing units of 72% over the next eight years, 72% of the total number of houses in Costa Mesa in the next eight years. Unfortunately, that has a terrible impact on us because we can all fix Newport Boulevard, we can all fix Harbor Boulevard and the traffic thereof. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
Hello, Commissioner, my name is Todd Wager. Can you hear me?
Go ahead. Thank you.
Local business owner, you may recall, I have my law firm in Costa Mesa and had, used to have a gym in Costa Mesa. And you may recall, I'm the owner of Winter Greens Delivery, the cannabis delivery that you all voted 6-0 in favor of recently, and I want to thank you again for that. I just thought, I wanted to stop by and give you a bit of an update on our progress and maybe some constructive feedback for the process. So if you recall, the Commission approved us unanimously in April. We then were not able to have an inspection from Building Safety Police, et cetera, until June. And then we did have a few minor things to fix, which we, which were on me, which we fixed within 30 days, end of July. We did not have our onboard meeting until end of August, almost six weeks later. We're still not open. We have, and what I'm here to talk to you about is the process, not the people. I want to make sure that it's understood, the staff at City of Costa Mesa has been incredible. At every turn, they've been amazing to work with, from planning to the rest of the staff. It's been an absolute pleasure and joy, but they don't have the resources to get us open. So obviously, to the city, this is, you know, several months of tax revenue that hasn't been able to be applied to the city. For me, as a business owner, I'm now in my 13th month of paying rent on a warehouse without, with zero revenue. So from a business perspective, this is really tough pill to swallow. The main problem, if I may just continue for a few more seconds, is the City of Costa Mesa requires us to get all employees approved through the city. And the live scan process is one thing, but then Costa Mesa PD also has to review and approve. We're so highly regulated in this industry already by the state. Obviously, it doesn't benefit our business to employ people that are, you know, potentially criminal in behavior or, or whatever negative, you know, issues the City of Costa Mesa Public Police Department and the feds are looking for. So, you know, we have insurance requirements, we have state requirements, there's regulations as long as my arm, which, as a cannabis attorney, I've been navigating for, for clients, including myself, for almost 15 years now, seven years since.
Thank you, sir. Your three minutes is up. I'd encourage you, if you haven't expressed those details to staff, that you do that, and maybe they can work with you on addressing those process issues. Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm here to talk about Measure K. I'll start with the process, which was extremely problematic. We had an ad hoc committee that consisted of only three city council members instead of a group of stakeholders, people like business owners, residents, nonprofit leaders, and city officials. Since the meetings were held in private, it took away transparency, which is vital for the residents to trust the city. That means that only a few people determined what they wanted, but their vision is being forced on 110K residents who only have a short time to review and give input on something that affects their daily lives. It was rushed. The version adopted by the council had typos. It amended the wrong section number of the ordinance. The map has parcels that shouldn't be up for redevelopment, such as Fire Station 6 and the police substation. It's not transparent to the public. There was this last-minute substitution of ballot measure language. The city council violated the Brown Act by not giving the public the right to review and speak on the ballot measure language. The last-minute horse trading between two council members turned into a game of politics. Measure K is a bait and switch. The findings page says it's about affordable housing, and we need affordable housing, but the amendment language doesn't specify the change in use must be to housing, affordable or not. In fact, if you look at how the document operates, you'll see that Section 3 gets rid of the affordable housing language in Section 4, so it isn't needed. In the rush, the writers made novice mistakes. The measure is poorly written. We don't have an ordinance requiring affordable housing, so developers will just keep building luxury units. The flowery language in the findings says this is to revitalize parts of the city, but what are the plans for revitalization? What are the plans for housing? How tall will the buildings be? None of those questions have been answered because there are no plans. Cities are living things, and they have to grow. But the problem is, how do you grow a city to be the best city possible for its residents if you don't have a consensus on how that will be accomplished? How do you do it without planning for the future? How do you do it without mitigating the impacts of traffic, noise, visual blight, overuse of parks, stress on public services, and overcrowding of schools? We need answers to that before opening the floodgates. The city says this is necessary to satisfy the state, but other cities have growth control measures, and they aren't repealing them. In order to make the state happy with its housing element, Newport considered repealing its green light initiative, but decided it was a waste of resources. They had that right. Costa Mesa decided to create a colossal waste of resources in Measure K. Measure K is about one thing and one thing only. It's about hijacking the citizen's right to vote on certain large projects that will impact our daily lives. Vote no on Measure K. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, I have to say ditto to everything the last speaker said, and I'm here for the Planning Commission because what's lacking in Measure K is planning. There is no planning. It was a hail mary thrown together about six days before the final date for the registrar voters to get it on the ballot. So the residents had no input. Our council had four years to oversee and put this together in a reasonable manner and let some of the residents have input, but no. They had to do this last-minute backdoor ad hoc committee with three of its council members, the same three council members that also voted on their same issue. So when it came up for a vote, three of the six were already on the ad hoc committee, so you didn't have to guess how they were going to vote. So you had a 6-1 vote on this. And nobody except one council person thought that the residents should have input. So what we have is, we have something that is going to benefit the developers, it's going to benefit the council, because the city, if it's passed, the residents have no oversight. If they vote on something, we have no method or process to overturn it or to object. Why, which is what they're trying to cut off at the knees, was the people's initiative. I call K the anti-people's initiative because it is not in any way, shape, or form allowing the residents to vote. Now, these people that are up for vote right now, the mayor and two council people, they think your vote is very worthy, and they want you to vote for them. However, your vote to vote for something that happens to your city and the future, your vote is no good in that regard, but it's okay for the developers and for them and for future council members that we don't even know about or who they'll be or if we will agree with them, have more power than the residents and the residents' vote. I call foul. You want to support this? This is a grassroots membership only by residents. We have no developer money. We are just all funded by residents. If you want to sign, or you want some literature, or you want to donate, go on Costa Mesa first. That's costamesa1st.com. We need signs, and this is an all grassroots measurement. So don't let the developers tell us what's going to happen to our city, how we're going to run it, and additionally, take away our vote. I call hell no. No on K.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. A quick question. The road between, on Wilson, between Harbor and Fairview has been under construction for a while for the basin water project, and then we talked about a few months ago about them putting it back together, and they fixed the potholes, but now it's more of a mogul. So I was kind of wondering if that is as good as it's going to get, or are they going to, are they going to actually finish it?
So I can address that, sir. The Wilson Street project is still continuing, so therefore, our contractor's working on making the repairs on that project. So maybe near the end of the meeting, I can give you my information, and if you don't want any updates on that, I can gladly give those to you.
Do you know when it's scheduled to be, like, is it going to get resurfaced and leveled out, or is it just going to get coated over?
Wilson Street will be resurfaced. Yes, sir.
Any date?
I can't give you a particular date because the contractor's working on other projects within the city, but once I get a construction schedule, I can forward that to you, sir.
This, like, this century, or?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to address the Commission? Anna, do we have anyone on Zoom or on the phone?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I'll close public comments, which takes us to Commissioner's comments. And why don't we start with Commissioner Toller?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I have a few comments tonight. I'm glad there's so many people here. So there's been several instances of tragedy on our streets since we last met. I'm going to spare the details of those tragedies, but you could find them in the news, you could find them on Nextdoor. That's in addition to the more subtle, ongoing tragedies of, well, kids not being able to leave their property safely, stranded, non-drivers, noise pollution, air pollution, all that results from our car-centric conditions at the moment. I also have anecdotes. Am I up? I also have some anecdotes that I'd love to share, but I also spare you the details on that. And so, you know, road safety, street safety, the comfort of our streets and the accessibility of everyone to use our streets, whether they're in a car or not, is always a theme I want to keep at the surface. And so I want to express my support to staff publicly for everything that they do in trying to make our streets better for more people. Because if you, if you drive around, if you bike around, you notice in the last few years there's been more things happening. There's been bollards going up, there's been better crosswalks going in, new bike lanes, whether they're painted, whether they're protected. And I do that in full recognition that this is tricky stuff, because when drivers get inconvenienced, they make a big fuss, and it makes it tough for the city to move forward with these things. And also, making our streets safe and comfortable in an environment where there's cars is tricky business. And so I recognize that every once, not every project is going to be a grand slam. Every once in a while, it's going to be a little rough, it's not going to work well. And I, I want to just encourage everybody to stay flexible and stay nimble and patient and in unity as we move forward and make Costa Mesa a better place, more safe for more people to get around. I rode my bike, I found myself in a situation where we were giving out bike lights as part of a SCAD grant on Baker and Bristol, and I had to get home to the east side. And if you could just imagine how you would do that for a second, you might find yourself at a loss of trying to figure that out. But I ended up taking Randolph, which is newly calmed with parking in the middle. I went through a roundabout, a new roundabout in Costa Mesa, which a lot of people are scared of, but it was painless and easy and comfortable for me. And I made it to Newport Boulevard, and there was bollards protecting me. And I rode on Newport Boulevard with bright green protective bollards, and it felt very good. And it didn't get me all the way home safely. I had to get on the sidewalk and make some weird crossings, but man, it's a, it's a really good start. So I really applaud our city staff because we're doing more than almost anyone else in Orange County on these things, and it takes a lot of courage to do that. I also want to announce, there were three really important bills signed by the governor this week. AB 1938, this is going to sound weird, but it gives cities the power to lower speed limits if they want to. They didn't used to have that right. If you want to look into that, look at the 85th percentile rule. Cities have more power over their own speed limits now. AB 1938, that's going to be huge for us. AB 2264 requires leading pedestrian intervals at state-owned signals, so any signal, traffic signals on Newport Boulevard. Leading pedestrian intervals is when you get the walk signal a few seconds, between three and seven seconds, before the car light turns green, so that those pedestrians are already out there and in sight of the drivers turning right before they get the green light. It really is a safety enhancement. Also, ADA, ADA features are included in that bill, so you hear the chirping when you can cross. So that's really important. Lastly, AB 2097 was a big one. That is the state taking the right from cities to mandate parking for any sort of project within a half mile of a transit stop. Now, what constitutes a transit stop is something that's important, and hopefully we'll have better, more frequent, robust transit in the future. But parking spaces are very expensive, $25,000 to $50,000 a space that gets passed on to the renters, the new homeowners. They really control site design, they control aesthetics. Donald Shoup, everybody knows UCLA professor Donald Shoup of economics, he calls parking minimums a fertility drug for cars. And so if we don't want to see more traffic, if we don't want to see more cars all over the city, we need to pull back on requiring people to provide parking. And this applies to housing, and it also applies to commercial establishments. So right now, this is practiced throughout everywhere. Places, establishments that serve alcohol have to provide parking, onsite parking. Now, just think about that for a second, how much sense that makes. So even that's being taken away. So that's AB 2097, so I think that's really important. And last, last comment, as we talk about parking, I just want to keep bringing this up. Tonight and every night we meet as the Planning Commission, we're planning the future of the city. We had a lot of comments tonight about what the future looks like, how we're getting there, how much of our time is taken up by talking about parking. What about all the cars? Where are all the cars going to go? And whether that's a good use of our time? Those are all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Toller. Commissioner Rojas, any comments?
I have no comments tonight. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Russell?
No comments tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Erith?
Thank you, Chair Zick. Thank you all for coming out tonight. It's always nice to see the public participating in this discourse. So it's nice to see you all. Thank you for joining us. I'll just share a few brief comments of what I've been involved in in the last couple weeks since our last meeting. I attended the State of the City with the Costa Mesa Chamber of Commerce, and we had guest speaker Mayor John Stevens there, who had everyone absolutely in stitches. He's a very funny man. And I wanted to thank the Chamber of Commerce for being so welcoming, and it was nice to catch up with a lot of folks there throughout the day. I also had a chance to go to the Art Venture by South Coast Plaza, and it was, it was great to see an exhibit of all of our local artists, and there was dancing there, and it was just a beautiful thing. So I think, looking forward, you should expect to see a lot more art and artful things going on here in the City of Costa Mesa, so stay tuned. And then also, this weekend, I went to the Wild and Scenic Film Festival at the Unitarian Universalist Church in Mesa Verde. It was a great time. It was a very intimate event where the producers of those films were actually there to answer questions in a Q&amp;A session. So, you know, some of these film festivals that we have are also a great, a great way to get more involved in the community if you have the time. So with that said, thank you, Chair Zick, and I'll pass it back to you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Vivar?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I too want to thank everybody for your participation today. Sometimes our chambers are empty for Planning Commission, so great to have lots of public participation. It's an important and crucial part of a healthy democracy. I want to, I would like to welcome Pai Von to our city staff, so thank you for coming over from the County of Riverside, and I'm sure you bring a wealth of knowledge and experience with you that you will be able to apply to our city, and I'm sure we will keep you busy. So thank you for coming over to work for us. Second of all, I was invited by Councilmember Arlois Reynolds to participate in a prayer breakfast for Hispanic Heritage Month at Vanguard University. So I did that Friday morning, and it was a great event. I got to see Rajah Setharaman from our department, Janet Hauser, and a few other of our wonderful city staff members. So it was a great opportunity to celebrate the contributions of the Hispanic community to the City of Costa Mesa. And yeah, great to participate in the event. And I think events like this aren't necessarily to kind of, you know, do like an us versus them kind of thing, like, well, we're this community and you're that community, but I think it's great to celebrate the contributions of different cultural groups around their community, recognizing that the Hispanic community, nor any other community for that matter, is a monolith, and we all have a diversity of experiences and backgrounds that we bring to the table. So always great to celebrate diversity, cultural diversity, but also diversity of opinion and background and what we bring to discussions in the decision-making processes, future of the city, and continuing to build the city. And thirdly, I do have one question I'd like to pose to city staff regarding Measure Q applications. So I understand that we have 60-plus applications we've received and about 10 or 11 that we've approved by now. Is there a possibility that city staff could prepare a map for us with the applications that have been approved, Measure Q, cannabis retail sites, and those that are in the books for us to look at, just to kind of keep that map available as we keep going here?
Thank you, Commissioner. Staff will be happy to put something together. Approved applications are a little easier than things in process that aren't, haven't yet been heard by the Commission, but we'll certainly provide that information.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lee. And that's it for me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. I have no comments tonight, and we have no consent calendar items tonight. We do have three public hearings. And so, Anna, if you could read the first public hearing into the record?
Public hearing item number one, zoning application 22-22 to amend a previously-approved conditional use permit, PA-17-17, to deviate from shared parking requirements and allow an accessory tasting area in an existing home brewing supply and specialty beer and wine store, Windsor Home Brew Supply, in the C1 zone for property at 743 Baker Street, Suites D and E. Please note, we have not received public comments on this item. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
Thank you, Anna. Commissioner Rojas?
I have none, sir.
Commissioner Toller?
None.
Commissioner Russell?
Yes, yesterday I went over to the, to the building and talked to Yes, yesterday I went over to the building and talked to some of the staff over there just to see what it looked like.
Thank you. Commissioner Erith?
None, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Vivar?
No, sir. Thank you.
All right. And I too visited the site, and while the owner wasn't there, I did speak to one of the employees. All right, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Akis to make the staff presentation.
You know, one second before we do that, I'd like to actually introduce Patrick. I don't think the commission has met Patrick yet.
Please do.
He is a new planner for the division. We stole him from Newport Beach, so we're very proud of that. He's a great addition to our staff. And as you see, we're breaking him in good with two items tonight. So I just wanted to welcome him to the planning commission and introduce him to the commissioners officially.
Thank you for that, Mr. Drapkin, and welcome, Mr. Akis.
Hello, commissioners. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight and a privilege to serve on this very talented team of planners we have here in Costa Mesa. The application before you is a minor conditional use permit to amend a previously-approved conditional use permit. Just for some background on the evolution of this business, it first started out as a home brewing equipment store. In 2017, the commission approved a conditional use permit to add for the off-sale or takeaway of beer and wine. Before you, at the heart of this proposal, is to operate an accessory tasting area that will be complementary to the existing homebrew store and beer and wine sales. There's also a deviation from parking requirements, some amendments to the hours of operation, and an additional class per month that is meant to educate folks about the home brewing process. The project is located just south of Baker, at the southeast corner of Baker and Randolph. It has a commercial and zoning and general plan designation. The project consists of two multi-tenant buildings. The subject suite is in the northwest portion. It's a double suite occupying 222 square feet. Surrounding land uses include residences to the north, and all other surrounding areas are commercial. Here's a look at the existing conditions. You'll see that there is home brewing and beer and wine sales. The tenant space would be reconfigured and reorganized to allow for the installation of the permanent accessory tasting area. It would be partitioned off in compliance with alcoholic beverage control standards. The tasting area itself consists of five seats and two tables. The entrance facing the parking lot is to your right. Other than the installation of the barrier, there aren't any other tenant improvements proposed. As described in the applicant's letter, the tasting area is meant for folks to taste or sample the beer or wine before making a purchasing decision. It's also an opportunity for staff to interact and develop that customer relationship. Last call would be at 6:30. A proposed tasting room would be the equivalent to an eating and drinking establishment, which the code assesses at a rate of 10 parking spaces per thousand square feet of gross floor area. So gross floor area meaning back of house, kitchen area, restrooms. In this case, the tasting area is a unique operation in that it doesn't have a kitchen or that customer waiting area. So the deviation is for the parking to be assessed just on the area of the tasting room and not the gross floor area. Based off that shared analysis, sufficient parking is available. This is an excerpt of Table Three from the staff report. The shared parking allows for the mix of uses, and specifically notes where parking would be available during peak hours. The maximum peak demand is observed from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., at which there are 76 spaces projected to be used. The project provides 77 spaces and complies with shared parking requirements. In order to approve the conditional use permit, the commission must make the following findings, which staff is in support of approval. The project would add an economic opportunity for the applicant and also for customers of the area to have a unique opportunity in the form of the tasting room. The project is also appropriately conditioned to avoid conflicts and promote harmony with surrounding uses. Those are highlighted here. Substantial conformance with the plans, the license type. There's no live entertainment or dancing, and there's a maximum number of class participants, with classes occurring no more than twice a month. Consequently, staff does recommend approval of the project, that you find it exempt from CEQA under Class One existing facilities, and they also make the finding of public convenience or necessity for the issuance of the requested ABC license. That concludes my presentation. The applicant, Scott Windsor of Windsor Homebrewing, is here and available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Akis. Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff at this time? Commissioner Erith?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I have no questions for staff at this time. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Vivar?
Yes, sir. I do have one question. Thank you for your presentation. I think you hit the ground running with your first Planning Commission presentation as a staff member. So thank you for your very thorough presentation. I do have one quick question, and that is regarding the decision to include policy LU 6.7 regarding existing businesses retaining, regarding encouraging new business and retaining existing business in the city. Is there a reason that you chose or staff chose to include this policy for this item, for the general plan conformance section of the staff report?
Sure. So part of the proposal is to allow the accessory tasting room that would encourage the economic opportunities of the existing business. The applicant does have other operations, such as Anaheim. So I imagine he would like to stay in Costa Mesa where he first started, and his approval would help promote that.
Of course. All right. Well, thank you. That's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Russell?
No questions. That was a very good presentation.
Thank you. Commissioner Toller?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Rojas?
No questions. I'd like to thank staff for reviewing this with me earlier today, and all my questions have been answered. Thank you.
All right. Well, I've got a couple of questions. I note on page four of the staff report that there is a requirement by the ABC for a permanent barrier, and that permanent barrier appears to be this 40-inch-high stanchion partition. And if you could turn to page five of your PowerPoint presentation, and it depicts what I believe is that, a stanchion barrier. And I think the question I had when I looked at that, first of all, I'm assuming that that is correct. It has to be a permanent barrier. Okay. I was wondering how somebody would get to those three beer refrigerators at the top there of the layout. Or maybe even said another way, how a person behind the counter escapes from that narrow area. I don't see a little doorway or anything.
Vice Chair, thank you so much. That is a very fair question. The plans at this stage are conceptual, so that will be further refined in the plan check process, where it will go through our building engineer review, where they'll look at exiting and different access. From the plans, I'm confident the applicant doesn't intend to block off access to the refrigerators.
Okay, thank you for that. And then on handwritten page four, there's a condition of approval number nine. And I've asked about this in the past, and I don't quite remember the answer, so I'll give you another shot at trying to answer it. And there is a prohibition against portable refrigerated units. And of course, there's a number of refrigerated units here. What is the distinction between portable and what they have, and why is there that prohibition?
What condition is that you're referring to?
Condition number nine on handwritten page four.
I would imagine the condition for that is likely to prevent unsightly use of storage of merchandise. You know, maybe it could, someone might think it's tacky to have those type of ice chests or something similar to that, where they're displaying that. The ABC might also have provisions against that as well. Looks like something that the ABC might do. So, but not knowing for sure. That's my best guess at that.
Okay.
Yeah. I could check into that definitely with more detail and try to find out the history behind that.
Maybe next time it comes up.
Great.
And then my last question. On this layout, it shows two ADA-compliant restrooms. What does our code require this facility to have in terms of restrooms? Just the one, or are both required to be operational?
Thank you, Vice Chair. The plans are conceptual at this stage, so building compliance, including accessible restrooms, will be checked during plan check. It should be noted that the tenant space was formerly two suites, and previously they were merged. So that again will be looked at during the plan check process.
Okay. It's typically based on floor area, Chairperson Zick. I would have to check with the building department to see what the exact requirement is, but I would imagine that based on some previous uses that I've reviewed recently and had these discussions with building staff, it would be one, probably for the whole area, but I'd have to double-check that.
All right. Thank you for that. Any other questions from commissioners? No? Okay. Then I'd like to open the public hearing and ask whether the applicant or the applicant's representative is present. And if so, could you please come forward? And before you start, could you state your name for the record? And have you read the staff report and the conditions of approval, and do you agree to them?
Hi, my name is Scott Windsor. I have read the report, and I agree to it.
Okay, thank you. The floor is yours if you have a presentation or comments?
Yeah. I'll make it very brief, as I know there's a lot on the agenda tonight. As I mentioned, I'm Scott Windsor. I own and operate Windsor Homebrew Supply. Quick overview, it's a specialty retail brewing supply shop where we sell different grains, hops, yeast, ingredients, equipment to make beer and wine at home. A little over four years ago, we got a CUP to put in a bottle shop where we have limited beer and wine to go for off-premise consumption. About three years ago, I opened an Anaheim location up in North Anaheim where we added a bottle shop and tasting area. Since then, customers ask us almost daily when we'll do the same in Costa Mesa, so the time has finally come for me to ask for that approval. So that's why I'm here today. Having the tasting room would be greatly beneficial to my shop, as sharing and tasting is a great way to learn about new styles, also learning the nuances of how they're made. It'll be an auxiliary space to our current shop, only helping elevate our customer experience, especially these days when everything's going online. We're trying to keep people in the doors, coming back to physical locations, so this is an idea for that. It'll definitely not operate as a standard bar. We don't have TVs, liquor, pitchers, specials, you know, that type of thing at all. It's more of an area for limited, hard-to-find beers, not found anywhere else in the area. It's more of a place where an existing customer can come in, use the space to spend a little extra time with us, asking questions, talking with us, try something new to them. Won't be a late-night spot. We currently close at 6:00. We're asking to be open until 7:00 with last call at 6:30, so definitely not a late-night spot. We're committed to making sure it's safe, comfortable, well-lit for our customers. We deter loitering inside and outside the building. We only expect the gross income from the tasting room to be 5% to 10% of our gross sales, so it's not a moneymaker. It's more of just a fun extension of our current business. I've watched over the last seven years or so on Randolph as it's grown, expanded, developed into a great local spot. I feel like we can help contribute to that, keep the growth and excitement going. We work very closely with a lot of the breweries, collaborating, planning, helping with supplies. I've taught numerous classes on education with alcohol. I've been a part of the Orange County Brewers Guild, where we have helped with education and put on festivals for charity. We have a lot of support from local businesses, breweries, community on this project. All this to say, I'm just excited to help grow my shop, but also the community as well. We'll abide by all the laws set by the city and ABC. We've had zero infractions on both locations. We plan to keep it that way. We have no desire to make this a place where folks come to drink in excess or get rowdy or anything like that. It's calm, collected space to share a beverage with a customer and chat with them. So I appreciate you taking the time tonight. I welcome any questions you have for me.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Rojas, any questions?
I have none, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Toller?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Russell?
No questions.
Commissioner Vivar?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one quick question. So you're adding a second class to your business. Do you foresee the second class filling up? And I guess what was the business decision behind wanting that second class? I take it your first class that you offer is popular?
I think, just talking with planning commission, we wanted the opportunity to have two classes, but currently we do one a month or so. We'll probably keep it at that. I think we just put it in the report in case we wanted a second class, because they do get popular, especially after Christmas time with gifts.
Right, I'm sure. October passed enough.
Yeah.
All right, that's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Erith?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I have no questions this evening, other than to say thank you, Mr. Windsor, for the presentation. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mr. Windsor, I don't have any questions at this time, but if you want to have a seat, we'll allow for public comment. So I'll open public comments. Anybody wishing to speak on this item, please approach the podium. You'll have three minutes to speak. And again, if you're on Zoom, raise your hand. If you're on the phone, press star nine to be recognized. Yes, sir?
Hello. My name is Roderick Graham. I'm here representing the Graham Properties located on 2952, 2956, as well as 2952 Century Place. My family has owned and operated those properties for over 50 years, and currently they're being utilized as tenant lease properties. I'm also representing myself. My wife, we own the bakery Penelope's Perfections at one of those locations. We're an active business. We are enjoying all the walk-in traffic from the street. And first and foremost, I wanted to support Scott's project. Anything and everything that the city can do to bring in more foot traffic, to bring more business on the street, we are proponents for. As a matter of fact, on the, one of the main reasons for my coming here today was something that Commissioner Toller just talked about, parking, parking, parking. And we've been there for over 50 years, and we have been dreaming for the day that the city was actually going to do this development. And right before COVID, the city came and did their proposal, and we were all very excited. Our biggest concern was that the street would not become an employee parking lot for the establishments on Bristol Street, who we love, and we adore their businesses over there, the camp and the lab. But unfortunately, the parking is not limited. It's open parking for 12 hours a day. Anybody can park there. And what we have learned, unfortunately, is everybody who's coming and parking there is starting at 7:00 in the morning, and they're staying there until dark. And it's really become a permanent parking space. Um, and it's really become a, a permanent parking space. So, uh, we're here to speak that the street does need to have metered parking. Uh, we recommend getting an online app like all the other cities are doing because parking is a premium. You just need to put some signs up with the zones, just like they do in Newport Beach. And you guys have a cash cow there if you do that. It would also promote a lot more business because it's going, there's two problems on the street. Half the businesses have told their employees or the, uh, tenants to have their employees park on the street. And there are signs where it exclusively says that the parking is for, uh, customers only. So what is in turn happening is there's nobody walking the street. The other problem is, uh, 50% of the parallel parking that was available originally is no longer available.
Thank you, sir. Anna, do we have anyone on Zoom or phone?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman. Kyle Bishop, you may provide your public comment.
Hi, Commissioners, uh, I'm just a, uh, neighbor in the, um, uh, the condos adjacent to Randolph and Baker, and I just want to support, uh, any initiative by our neighbor to continue developing that area. Uh, ever since they put the street light there, uh, it's actually, um, done a great deal to, you know, for our local community, for every, all the residents there. We, you know, head out there often and walk over there. So I will take advantage of these extra classes and this tasting room personally and, uh, am looking forward and, uh, to seeing this development, so thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Anyone else, Anna?
No, there is not, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Windsor, if you'd like to come up and make any final, uh, comments, you're welcome to. No, you're good, okay? In that case, I'll close the public comment portion of, uh, the hearing and ask Commissioners if you've got any further questions of staff.
I do not, sir.
No?
None, sir.
All right. Uh, in that case, I'll close the public hearing and, uh, bring it back to the DIAS. If anyone has, um, a motion they'd like to make. Uh, Commissioner Toler?
Looks like I won. It looks like there was a competition going on. I move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of SEQA, Section 15301, and approve zoning application 2222, and making a finding of public convenience or necessity for the issuance of a Type 42 ABC license subject to the conditions of approval.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Rojas. Uh, Commissioner Toler, any comments? Would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure, real quick. Um, I think this is, uh, that's a cool area. It's getting, it's getting better. I love hearing that people, there's foot traffic walking around there. Like I said, we were with the Costa Mesa Alliance for Better Streets, passing out, um, bike lights to people as the sun is going down earlier. And there really are a lot of people, partially because of those hotels there, but a lot of, um, employees are walking and, um, biking around there, a lot of visitors and a lot of patrons of these, um, these establishments. And, um, I think that's a, you know, that's a fun thing to do. Uh, so I think it's a great addition to the city. I'm glad we didn't get hung up on parking because I would feel very uncomfortable requiring parking for an establishment whose primary purpose is serving alcohol. And, uh, I agree with the commenter about, uh, pricing parking, uh, appropriately. I heard somebody say once, if pizza were free, you could never make enough of it. And it's the same with parking. If parking's free, you'll never have enough parking. And so pricing it so that some more customers could get in there and it's not just an employee parking lot, um, I'd like to, uh, continue that conversation in the future. But no, this is, this sounds like a good project to me, so thank you.
You're against free pizza? All right. Uh, Commissioner Rojas, would you like to speak to your second?
I don't, other than I'd like to echo, uh, Commissioner Toler's sentiment on the, uh, parking, uh, paying for the parking piece. That's actually a very interesting, uh, comment, but other than that, I have no other comments besides that.
All right, thank you. Uh, any comments, Commissioner Russell?
Yes, first of all, the, the comments about paying for parking, I thought was very astute. Uh, it's, uh, we could be making some money, we could be moving cars around. I think that makes sense. And secondly, this, I think this is a great example of us supporting a business that's been successful, successful in the city, wants to expand and adding, uh, value to the neighborhood. So I, I'm, I'm, I support this enthusiastically.
Thank you. Commissioner Vivar, any comments?
Yes, sir. I too would like to echo my colleague, Commissioner Russell's comments on retaining the existing business. I'm very happy that Land Use Element, uh, Land Use Policy 6.7 regarding, um, encouraging new business and retaining, um, while retaining existing business, uh, was in, in the general plan conformance section of the staff report. Um, I think it's something I'd like to see frankly happen more often, um, in our staff reports in, for commercial buildings. But anyways, that, that aside, I'm happy about this. Uh, I'm happy that we have, uh, brewery use in the city. It's an interesting use, um, and will contribute to the sort of city's, um, push to have, uh, kind of an artistic type, uh, community center in our city. So, uh, thank you for, uh, your business in the city. Thank you for choosing Costa Mesa, and I wish your business the best in, uh, in its endeavors. So I, I will enthusiastically support the motion as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Erith?
Thank you, uh, Vice Chair. Um, I, I too am happy to support the motion. I am a, a homebrew enthusiast and that's to say that I, it's not to say that I make it, but I like to surround myself with friends who make it and then I get to have it. Um, it's a great plan. Um, I, I wish you much luck moving forward. And that's all, Chair, thank you.
Uh, thank you. I'll be supporting the motion. Uh, two comments. Uh, one is that, um, this finding of convenience, uh, it has to do with the, uh, ABC's, uh, tracking of licenses within census tracts. And I just find it curious that there are seven which are allowed in that census tract, and there's 42 that are existing. I don't know if there's something that staff can do or should do. You don't have to respond to my question, but those numbers are so incongruent that, it just tells me that there's, uh, a, a problem with, um, maybe the, uh, process and philosophy that ABC has. Uh, I support, uh, that. Parking shortage. Well, I had no problem parking when I visited, uh, the business, thankfully, because they've got a real nice sign at the entrance to the parking lot indicating it's for patrons only. No problem parking there. I would have had problem parking otherwise though, because the parking on Randolph was full. Every single stall went down to the turn circle, came all the way back. Every single stall was occupied. And I can't help but think that many of the points the public commenter made about who's actually using that parking, um, are likely true. And, uh, I don't know that our traffic enforcement people can, uh, do something, um, about that situation. But it's a problem. The city spent money to create that parking there, and I don't believe they spent it to support underparked development or employees from underparked development. And if it takes putting meters there so that we don't have free parking and the people who really want it are willing to pay for it, um, maybe one hour, the first hour is free and then after that you have to pay, I would really encourage, uh, city staff to take a look at that issue and, uh, help find solutions because, um, I don't think that parking use is serving the intended purpose. So I'll support the motion. And Anna, could we call for the question?
That motion carries 6-0 with Chair Diarco absent.
Thank you very much, and that decision is final unless appealed to the City Council within seven days. That'll take us to public hearing number two. Anna, could you read that into the record?
Public hearing item number two, planning application 22-17 for a conditional use permit to allow a private K through 12 school, Renaissance School International, and a C1 zone for the property at 1600 Adams Avenue and 2850 Mesa Verde Drive East. Please note, we have received public comments on this item that have been provided to the commission and made a part of the record. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Erith?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Just so the public's aware, I'll be recusing myself on this item. Uh, reason being, I've been a, a long-term, very strong supporter of the Renaissance School, so much so that I'd put my name on paper, as you'll see in attachment two, page 21, in support of their, uh, move to the 1600 Adams location. So I'll be removing myself from this vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Erith. Someone will come get you and we're done. Commissioner Vivar, any ex parte communications?
Okay, yeah, I got it, sorry. Um, yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, I ran into a, a parent of one of the children at Renaissance, uh, who spoke to me briefly about this project a couple of days ago, and that's the only, I have, uh, only thing I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Russell?
Yes, I attended one of their open houses, uh, and was able to, to tour the facility and talk to some of the staff.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Toler?
No, sir, thank you.
Commissioner Rojas?
Uh, none prior to this meeting, just spoke to somebody briefly at the beginning of this meeting.
Very good, then. Turned over to Mr. Akis for, uh, the staff presentation.
Thank you, Vice Chair. This is a conditional use permit to operate a private K through 12 school. The existing building onsite would be repurposed for the school campus. Up to 210 students would be enrolled. Exterior improvements are to the onsite vehicle circulation, landscaping and drive aisles. Hours of operation would be 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM with school time operating from 8:00 AM to 3:30 PM. And the installation of outdoor play areas will be reviewed by the commission under a separate approval. The project is a C1 zoned site just above Adams, near Mesa Verde Shopping Center. It's also next to the post office and a city fire station. Surrounding uses to the north and south include residences with the east and west commercial. Here is a zoomed-in view of the site plan. You'll see in outline red, those are the subject properties. There is a shared parking lot at 2850 Mesa Verde that is shared by the Surgical Center, Dance Studio, Preschool, and the subject site. Outdoor playgrounds are called out in yellow. You'll see that the residences are to the north. Importantly, there is no access, or direct access rather, from Elm Avenue to the site. The only points of access would be off Mesa Verde. Part of the project includes modifying the driveway onto Adams Avenue so that only a right turn is possible. This will help facilitate the vehicle flow and the pickup and drop-off, uh, off, operations as we'll discuss shortly. Here are the existing conditions. It is the previous site of a gym, 25 Hour Fitness. As you see, the building is a little bit older. It was originally constructed in 1978, along with the existing 46 onsite spaces. So that's in addition to the shared parking that I mentioned. Here's a project rendering. You'll see that the building gets a nice refresh here with wall windows and different architectural treatments. This is a view facing the parking lot or eastward. And now look at the site plan. The 25 Hour Fitness building or the existing vacant building is in blue. You'll see that there are the access points along Mesa Verde and that driveway off of Adams. Taking a look at the floor plans, the building would be modified to prepare for the school with classrooms, administrative areas, labs, teacher rooms, and the existing gym would be used by the school for indoor recess and other multipurpose purposes. The project does consist of two floors, a first and second floor, with admin and classrooms on each. Taking a look at the pickup and drop-off plan, you'll see the red dash line weaving through the site. That is, uh, accommodating up to 45 cars with its 900-foot length. So any backup on a Mesa Verde is not expected. As conditioned, there would be five staff at any time during the pickup and drop-off periods to direct parents and vehicle flow. Also importantly, the vehicle spaces onsite would be temporarily cone off to prevent any, uh, backup or, um, obstructions. So it will allow for the efficient movement of the, uh, traffic. As required by the code, trip generation was assessed for the project. Under the Institute of Transportation Engineers, or ITE, rates, the existing gym use was significantly higher for the daily trips when compared to the proposed school. Schools do have special operating characteristics in that there is, uh, peak AM trips. So staff did look at the time of 7:45 to 8:45 when the students would be dropped off. They do have staggered arrival times for each grade. And after calculations, the trip credit for the, uh, existing gym use, it was determined that no traffic study was required. It's also worth noting that the temporary school site is within half mile of the proposed school, and there hasn't been any cause for concern there. There are no code requirements listed for schools or private schools, so it would be established by the conditional use permit. So the staff base, the parking requirement based off the number of staff members and administrative and guardian spaces. There would also be around 15 spaces lost for the reconfiguration of the drive aisles and the playgrounds. Overall, uh, 42 space surplus would exist with the project, so ample parking would be provided. You saw this with the previous project, but the conditional use permit findings must be made in order for the commission to approve the project. In this case, the school would be a relocation. They've operated in the city for over 11 years, most recently just up the street, uh, less than a mile away from the subject site. And this would provide, or continue to provide, uh, the public service of, of education to the city and surrounding region. The project is adequately conditioned to ensure that there aren't conflicts and to provide compatibility with the surrounding land uses. Some of those are maximum number of students, the hours, also the maximum number of students in each outdoor play area to keep down noise. Those play areas would also be monitored by staff. Implementation of the pickup and drop-off plan and monitoring would also have been adhered to with the project. With that said, staff does recommend approval to the Planning Commission. They find it exempt from SEQA under the Class One and Class 32 exemptions, and that you approve the project with conditions. Staff does have two changes to correct numbers in the condition of approval that were inadvertently transposed. Those would be... Excuse me. Condition number two, to correct 35 staff to 32. So that condition is proposed to be modified to the school shall not accommodate more than 210 students and 32 staff at any time. Document shall also meet all state and local building and fire occupancy limits or requirements. And then a change to condition number four, the school shall maintain a minimum of 78 spaces, where it now says 89. So with those changes, staff does recommend approval of the project. The applicant, Carrie Mizera, the executive director of the school, is here and available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Akas. We're going to take questions from the commission of staff, first of all. And let me start with Commissioner Rojas. Do you have any questions of staff?
Just a minor one. Did you say that the prohibited parking area is going to be coned off during the pickup and drop-off times? Did I understand that correctly?
Commissioner, that is correct. During the pickup and drop-off times, those areas would be temporarily coned off to tack back to the surplus of parking, even if they were to cone off all of the onsite spaces, surplus parking would be provided by the project.
Perfect. And then, given, and I don't know if this would be a question for you or for the applicant, but given that there's a prediction of 210 students maximum, do you have any idea what kind of vehicle traffic that would generate during the pickup and drop-off times?
Yes, our traffic manager from the Public Works Department is here to respond to some of the Mr.'s traffic questions. If you want, I can have Jennifer Rosales come up and discuss a little bit about that when the IT rate that she reviewed.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Toller?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Russell?
And this is probably something that Ms. Rojas can ask, answer. Now, the Montessori school right next door, did this take, did this traffic circulation pattern take into account their drop-off and pickup patterns? Was that coordinated in any way?
So we did, we did reach out to the Montessori school that's next door, and I had a discussion with owner Alex. He was very nice and gave me a lot of information with regards to his operations. I asked if he had a peak hour period where students were being dropped off on a regular day schedule, and he said, he generally mentioned that, for the most part, his students arrive most, on a wide variety of times during the morning, and basically he had really no peak period. So I, we also did visit the site on several occasions, and all of the parking for his use is occupied on their site. So, and basically, I did not see a whole lot of traffic movement from that school. So one other thing that I'd like to note is that our traffic requirements and our traffic fee provisions of Article 3 of the Costa Mesa Musical Code exempts schools from our traffic requirements, both fee and study. We did do some traffic review just to see what it would be like, but my staff certainly does not believe that either, either the school or the combination of the two schools will create any traffic impacts.
Okay, I just had this vision of all of, of both schools simultaneously having their kids, and all of this great plan, all of a sudden doubling and people being backed up, but you, the staff doesn't see that as being an issue?
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Vivar? Any questions?
Yes, sir, thank you. So is Ms. Rosales here? I have some transportation-related questions, or maybe I'll ask this at the end. I guess I could ask a non-transportation question first. This building is, has two stories. Does it have an elevator inside?
Yes, the proposed plans do have an elevator that would be added with the project.
That would be added with the project?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, just in terms of ADA concerns, you know, school, but I'm glad that that's going to be added. And now, from my transportation questions. I'm wondering what the signage and the striping is that will indicate to vehicles the right-turn restrictions along Adams? Specifically, will there be any striping on the driveway or signs posted that are visible to cars coming along Adams and/or cars leaving the site on Adams?
Chair, Chair, can you turn on her mic?
Thank you. Commissioner Vivar, the signing is, the exit onto Adams will be signed and striped to provide direction to drivers that it's a right-out only.
Is that going to be the sign R65, R61-3 CA for the arrow with the word "only" below it for the cars leaving?
Commissioner Vivar, I don't have the exact number of the sign, but it will be the standard right-turn-only sign. That's appropriate.
And will there be signage that's visible to the vehicles that are traveling along Adams that a left turn is, is not allowed? And I was specifically thinking of R3-2, which is the arrow turning left that's crossed out in the circle?
We can certainly review that signage for a no-left, but it will be a right-out only, and we'll make sure that the proper signing and striping is put in during the plan checks.
Right. If I may, I mean, this may kind of come later down the line when we review conditions, but putting up an R3-2 left-turn restriction sign facing the, any vehicle that might be on the left turn, two-way left-turn lane along Adams might be a good idea, just because there might not be any other way of letting them know that there is no left turn allowed. So... That's it. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rosales, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rosales, let me just piggyback on that last thought. I really hadn't gone through it in my mind until Commissioner Vivar was explaining it. I don't think you could put a sign in the middle of Adams that would restrict a left turn. There's, I think that'd be more of a safety problem, but you probably could put a sign at the driveway that would say "no entrance," and maybe somebody from the center lane intending to make that turn might see the sign and know they can't. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The other questions then that I have for staff. So the application indicates that this CUP is to allow for K through 12 school. When I look at the floor plan, I don't see any high-school-level classrooms indicated. That's not, in and of itself, a problem, but there is an indication on handwritten page 13 from the applicant that says that the future growth of enrollment, which is expected to exceed 350 students, would be requested under a separate entitlement. So to be clear, is this application for K through 8 only?
Thank you, Vice Chair. The applicant may be better able to explain the enrollment spread. The project description does mention that it is K through 12. There are several classrooms on the floor plan that are designated as multipurpose, and that would provide for flexibility for older students. Under the operational plan, the student enrollment is more concentrated through K through 8. However, there are around 15 students per grade level in the high school.
Okay. So the only constraint isn't what grades they have, but simply the 210 total students, correct?
That's correct.
And then, on your clarification of condition of approval number four, where you changed the number to 78, is that because 89 are available, but 78 is what's required, and that's why you've adjusted that condition to 78?
The number listed on the draft resolution was inadvertent and transposed. The correct number is 78, as determined through the staff analysis that incorporated the number of staff and the anticipated number of guardian and administrative spaces.
Got it. And then, following that, and I'm looking at, well, I kind of did my own table on staff report page eight, but the onsite total parking currently is 46, as I understand it from your report, but if we lose 15 due to the playgrounds, that would leave only 31 onsite. And so then, I'm wondering if the condition of approval, should, condition of approval number four, should be expanded to say, "The school shall maintain a minimum of 78 shared spaces and 31 onsite spaces." Would you be able to address that question?
Vice Chair, if the commission desires that requirement, it can certainly be proposed. How it's drafted now, it just requires the code-required spaces, so that would either be provided onsite or through the shared spaces. If it's the desire of the commission to condition the shared spaces...
Okay, so what would, what would, what would protect a situation where the applicant, for whatever reason, takes up a majority of their onsite parking and relies only on the shared parking to meet their total demand? What would be the check against that?
Well, we can certainly look at the operational characteristics, and of course, if it does become an issue, that would go through code enforcement to enforce the, the use permit. So again, if it is the desire of the vice chair to modify that condition, to specify the shared space versus onsite space availability, that is definitely something that can be proposed.
Okay. And then, two other questions regarding access. See where this was. On staff report page six, in the paragraph under the diagram, the very first sentence says, "The applicant proposes student drop-off pickup vehicles would turn right from Mesa Verde Drive East." And that makes sense if they're headed, I guess, what generally would be considered north, but if vehicles are coming south on Mesa Verde Drive East, they would also be looking to turn left into that parking lot. So we're not restricting the entrance to only right turn, correct?
That's correct. Both a right and left turn would be accommodated from Mesa Verde onto the site. However, it should be noted that most of the, the traffic would be arriving from Adams Avenue, which is an identified R2 roadway in the general plan, and that's consistent with the applicant's project description and the breakdown of where they have their students in different cities, like Huntington Beach and, and other nearby cities.
Did we look at how much queuing is available on Mesa Verde for people that would be looking to make a left-hand turn? Particularly if they're waiting for people to make a right-hand turn, who would seem to have the right-of-way coming from Mesa Verde from the south?
Public Works would be better able to speak to that.
Okay, and then my last access question. Since we're basically prohibiting entrance to the site from Adams, I'm wondering what kind of wayfinding signage that we would require, and I think it would go beyond recommend, I think it would be required, so that people coming down Adams would know, "I see the school, I can't turn right into the parking lot, how do I get there?" Or, "I'm a visitor, I see the school, I can't turn right, how in the world do I get in here if there's no sign there that says the entrance is off of Mesa Verde?" Did we look at that?
Well, currently, there is not a proposed sign plan. There would be adequate identification for the property in conjunction with, with Public Works to notify vehicles as well.
One, one other thing, Vice Chair. One of the aspects of the operations plan for this school is to have an orientation, and during the orientation, the applicant will go over with all the students and the parents and the drivers, what are, what is the, what is expected from them as far as circulation? And they, they go deep-dive and do who could come at certain times, but one of the aspects is that they will only be allowed to make a certain turn off of Mesa Verde Drive East.
Okay. All right, so thank you for that. So I'll open up the public hearing, ask the applicant to come forward if they have comments or presentation they'd like to make. And before you begin, have you read the staff report, conditions of approval, and do you agree with them?
Vice Chair Zig, I'm Adrian Gladson, the case planner for RSI and navigating their voyage to you this evening. So I get to consider myself kind of like the air traffic controller to bring this project before you this evening. I have a background in planning, and your staff has been very generous in bringing us forward. I am not the, the school operator, but I did want to give you a little bit of background that we have been spending a great deal of time getting through all the details and the questions that you have asked. We believe and very confidently that the conditions of approval will achieve the things that you're aiming to cover with the application this evening.
So you agree with the conditions of approval?
And I will let Ms. Mizera speak a little bit further about that as well. We know we made it tweak a little bit, but the school does want to tell their story for you, and it is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Mizera, who will tell you about that, and several of her folks here this evening, and she'll tell you about the conditions as well.
So I appreciate that. And before you start your presentation, could you tell me if you've read the staff report and the conditions of approval, and do you agree with them?
Yes, I have read the staff report and agree with the conditions of approval.
Thank you. The floor is yours. Take your time.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Vice Chairman Zig, planning commissioners, city staff, RSI parents, Zigus from representatives, and members of the community. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Carrie Mizera. I am the executive director of Renaissance School International, the first trilingual immersion school in Orange County. I am here, and I'm very grateful to be here for the opportunity to be in front of the planning commissioners to request for the approval of the conditional use permit of 1600 Adams, which is the former 24-hour fitness building. And through this process, I actually learned that the city staff and the commissioners work very hard, and you take things very seriously, and I really appreciate that, and I want to just take the opportunity to thank you for your service. Renaissance School International, RSI, has been a tenant of the Mesa Verde community for the last 11 years. We have made positive impacts in the community in the areas of education, culture, and economics. Many of our families over the years have planted roots in the city, and many families in the city have also planted roots in our school. Costa Mesa is our home away from home. I have, I have to say, one of the things that we really appreciate about the city is the law enforcement and the fire and rescue. You should see our kids' face when we see the fire truck coming onsite to do field trips. They just love that, and they just really enjoy that. So we really appreciate that part of our city. RSI have been, has been looking for a future home since 2016, and it has not been an easy journey. When the opportunity of 1600 Adams... When the opportunity of 1,600 Adams presented itself to us, we jumped for joy. The representative of Sigurdstrom and son, who is the owner of the 1,600 Adams, took the time to visit our school. They wanted to understand better who we are, what we're about, and they also wanted to learn about our culture. They were present at the info session earlier this month when we reached out to the community. They're also present here tonight. And I am very thankful for their support and for their trust. And I look forward to working with them to make 1,600 an asset for the city. A little bit about the school. RSI started as a story of a family who wants the best education for their child. My family became part of, second part of, part two of the story when we brought the school from the east coast to the west coast. I believe investment in education pays the biggest dividends because children are our future. In the globe, in this global economy, the best education must include the teaching of world languages from an early age. And that's what we're about. Tonight, a couple of our students who live in Costa Mesa will be sharing a short message with you. First, I would like to invite Henry to come up to the podium. Henry had to speak, to say a few words in Mandarin Chinese. So Henry has created several videos in science and the complex concept of science, but it's in Mandarin Chinese. So Henry, please come up.
Hello, I am Henry Nielsen, and I'm here to support Renaissance. And I'm here to say some stuff in Chinese for you guys. So 大家好，我的名字是Henry. 那是所有的。谢谢。Thank you.
So allow me to translate. Henry said he is in 10th grade and he's been at the school for 11 years. The part about a school that he enjoys is that in the Chinese class and in the Spanish class, he's not allowed to speak one word of English. So that's how he really is able to acquire his language so well. He has, he, he really wants to be able to use a language for work and to contribute to the society, but at the same time also for leisure and when he travels and he, he also will get to meet a lot of people. And Henry, if you're interested in his video, he has a YouTube channel and it's under the name of Henry the Science Kids. So check it out. All right. The next student I would like to bring up is Kennedy. And she was going to be speaking a few words in Spanish. And Jerick, my son, is going to translate for her because I don't speak a word of Spanish. So I'm going to ask her some questions in English and she's going to answer in Spanish. It's okay. You don't have to. So what is your name?
Mi nombre es Kennedy Voe.
What grade are you in?
Yo estoy en grado sexto.
Okay, so can you translate those two?
She said her name is Kennedy Voe and she's in the sixth grade.
How long have you been with the school?
Yo fui a RSI por siete años. Y cada año la escuela solo ha ido mejorando.
She's, she said she's been in the school for seven years and every year the school has been improving.
Very nice. What do you enjoy the most about the school? And what do you hope to do with the language you acquire?
A mi me gusta todos los días. Yo puedo aprender cosas nuevas en todas mis clases. Y yo quiero que yo puedo ir a un país completamente diferente y poder hablar con todas las personas con fluído.
I said, every day I like to go to school to learn new things in all of my classes. And I hope to be able to go to different countries, completely different, and speak to everybody with fluently in different languages.
Beautiful. Thank you so much, Kennedy. Thank you, Jerick. All right. So, good job. Thank you so much. The mission of RSI is to inspire and equip future global leaders with skills to enable success. With RSI having a permanent home in Costa Mesa, the city is going to be known as the nurturing ground for these future global leaders. I sincerely, sincerely hope that the Planning Commission will approve our application tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any comments or questions for Ms. Mazzara? Commissioner Rojas?
No real questions. I'd also like to thank staff for answering my questions already on the previous part. I'd just like to thank you and kids for blowing my mind with that. Very good job. Kind of surreal there, but I enjoyed that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Toler?
Sure. Thank you for that presentation, everybody that was involved. 210 students, you said, some live in Costa Mesa is, obviously, I've already shown my cards tonight with some, you know, the subject of cars, but just as a, just out of curiosity, is there any bus system or ride-share program that's part of the, the school? That's trying to, so we don't have 210 cars moving in and out every day?
Right. Good question. So a couple of things. First of all, we're already operating in Costa Mesa, Mesa Verde community, less than a mile away. So we've been doing that, right? Second of all, our ride-share program, one, one of the ways is most of our families have multiple siblings. So a few of them actually will be coming in one car instead of one at a time. We have also worked with a ride-share company that, actively working with them, that we will be offering to our families who live, you know, in a certain clutter. And so that will be an option also for them.
Okay, thank you. And I just have a couple of questions for, for staff probably that I, I didn't want to go first last time, so I have them now. I'm thinking about the, the improvements that are planned for Adams. They're pretty significant. That include, you know, protected bike lanes. It's really to get Harbor and OCC and everything connected to the River Trail and the Huntington. And I imagine in a few years when that is completed, that we would have a lot of people from Costa Mesa trying to get to the River Trail, OCC students that live in Huntington getting back home, probably zipping around on e-bikes. And I would never suggest that it's, it's our job to dampen or limit what the land use should be based on those considerations. But I think it's worth thinking about a couple of points of conflicts that might be intensified. And one is that exit. So you have 45 cars going out at Adams. And in my experience, when you're on a sidewalk, you're in a bike lane, the people exiting, sometimes to be able to see the oncoming traffic coming at 40 miles an hour or so, they have to get pretty far out there, often waiting on the sidewalk, blocking the sidewalk, just to be able to see. Also, you know, there's a, there's a figure in here. Eight lanes, or six lanes plus the, the center lane, 80 feet wide. That's a significant road. And I could imagine that drivers, every day, they're just used to just zipping out of there without slowing down. So the line of sight, if there's anything that could, whether it's signage or chokers or speed bumps or anything, just to cause drivers to come to a complete stop before they hit the sidewalk. And that's, that's a universal problem that isn't figured out. So it's tricky. I understand. And then the other thing is you get people into this routine of turning on East Mesa Verde every day, and it becomes very easy. That's a conflict point with people on bikes in our new facilities trying to go straight, probably at the same time, you know, in school, schools out, classes are out. So half rhetorical, I want to bring those up. If there's any, I don't think there's any additional conditions that might be appropriate, but I just wanted to, to bring those up. And feel free to respond or not, but those are, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Toler. Commissioner Russell?
I don't have any questions. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Commissioner Vivar?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for your wonderful presentation. I'm actually someone who is partial to language learning. I speak three languages myself and I'm trying to learn a fourth. So opportunities like this for children to be able to grow up and expand their horizons in language learning, I think, is a wonderful opportunity. And thank you, Kennedy, and your, your peer as well for the great example of what you've learned at the school here for the Planning Commission tonight. I have a question for Ms. Mazzara. So the staff report mentions something about students having to be dropped off by their parents. Are students able to bike to school? And if so, are you guys having any bike racks on, onsite for, to facilitate that?
At this point, we don't plan to have students drive or bike to the school.
Okay. Based on the school operations that you've had thus far, do you, do you guys ever do field trips? And if so, do you think this site would be okay in terms of like bus access? Would you have like a bus access loading zone for students to load the bus in case of any field trips or special events that you guys take, you guys might take your kids to?
Yes, we definitely do do field trips. At our previous site and our current site, we will be doing that and the future site also. So yes, there will be a drop-off zone for bus and we will make arrangement for that and make sure there's enough space for that.
Okay. And in terms of truck, truck drop-offs and deliveries, you guys probably get food deliveries, supply deliveries and other materials. Do you guys have a, somewhere onsite as well that would facilitate that? And based on what you've seen operating your, your school for the past 11 years, do you have a space onsite that you feel comfortable with for, for those, facilitating those drop-offs?
Yes, and we can arrange for the dropout to be outside of the pickup, drop-off hours of, of the students. So it will trade off, you know, with the traffic. And yes, there's definitely going to be space for that.
Wonderful. Okay. Thank you so much for your presentation again. I really enjoyed it and thank you for taking the time to present to us today. And that's it for me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Henry and Kennedy for their language demonstration. But more than that, for the courage to do public speaking. One of the things that most people find fearful in life is public speaking. And look at you, at your young age, here in this venue. Good job. I've got one question, Ms. Mazzara, for you. Could you speak to what accreditations, if any, your school has?
Thank you for the question. We are in the process of working through the WASS accreditation. We're not there yet, but we, we've been busy the last few years with COVID and all different things. But it is in the plans for sure.
Okay. And could you speak to the idea of a sign, a welcome to Renaissance School sign positioned on Mesa Verde at the entrance to the parking lot? In fact, the only entrance to your facility. Could you speak to your interest in that sign? And to what extent you would be allowed to do that based on your lease?
That I will have to consult the leasing, the listener. So, but currently, at our current site, we do have a very clear signs as entrance, and there's only one way in, and there's a very clear signs as exit, and there's only one way out. So we've been operating in, under that already. And if we're allowed to do the same at the new location, we will be doing that again.
Okay. I'd encourage you to pursue that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So at this time, I'll close the public comment, excuse me. I'll open the public comment for this item. So any members of the public that would like to speak on this, please come to the podium. You'll have three minutes to share your, your thoughts. Yes, sir?
Good evening, good afternoon. My name is Kai Thaisokin Thaniya, and I'm speaking on behalf of RSI. Nearly 10 years ago, my family moved from North California to South California so that I could take classes at RSI. My parents chose RSI because they did not want to choose between one culture or the other, Chinese or Spanish. I really enjoy taking classes here because, as my fellow classmates have said, the way they teach is superb. Currently, I like to bike to school. So it is about a 15 to 30-minute bike, depending on what time I leave and what the traffic is like. And after school, it is very easy for me to drive, to bike from school to a park, a store, or my own job. And that means that there's a lot of opportunities for me when RSI stays in Costa Mesa. When I started this, mi nombre es Kai. Ahora, a mi me gusta manejar mi bicicleta a la escuela. Y cada día solo necesito como 15 a 30 minutos para manejar desde mi casa a la escuela. Después de mis clases, yo puedo manejar desde la escuela a un parque, a unas tiendas, o a mi trabajo. Entonces, me da muchas oportunidades si la escuela se queda en Costa Mesa. 大家好，下午好。我的名字是凯。Thank you, everyone. Gracias. 谢谢你们.
Hello, everyone. I'm going to cry because that's my, my son. Our journey to RSI has been a very long one. Obviously, I'm the one who didn't want to have to choose between my husband's culture and my family's culture. And we had searched for school for many years, looking all over the country. I toured many, many schools. And finally, when I found this school, I drove down here immediately and booked a tour and went back home and said, "How would you like to move to Southern California?" So I moved my whole family here. And since then, it's been so important to us because not only is the school is important to learn the two languages, but the teachers are native speakers. So it makes a huge difference to us, who those who do understand the languages, that our children are learning properly and not just being given an education that, "Oh, yes, we will teach your children to speak," but it's not proper dictation and not proper verbiage. And since then, being here in Costa Mesa has really become a home for us. Like he said, they play soccer here. They get to have, he started his first summer job at the OC Fair. Also, RSI provides the opportunity for the high schoolers that by the time he finishes high school, he will already have his AA degree from OCC. So everything is integrated here for us, for our family. And that's why we choose Costa Mesa as our home. And we appreciate you considering that the site stays here within Costa Mesa. And I agree with Mr. Toler and any others about improving the bike lanes for everyone's safety, especially crossing Harbor right now is very difficult with all that construction at the 405. That's where my son has to cross every day and there's no proper bike lanes there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir, why don't you go ahead?
A little intimidated following all these impressive young adults. My name's Eric Emery. I'm a resident of Costa Mesa, Mesa Verde. I had prepared a few slides I figured I'd show. But I'd like to start by just saying I'm in full support of the school. I live, as I mentioned, nearby. My wife and I have a young daughter. It's the kind of school I'd love to send her to, is the kind of place, hopefully, we could aspire to actually send her to. And Ms. Mazzara spent probably about an hour giving... Uh, and Ms. Mazzara spent probably about an hour giving us an overview of everything that's going on, concerns about the traffic in the area, et cetera. So, from that perspective, I think they're doing everything they can to address the things that are within their control. Uh, what I would like to do is share a few thoughts about a concern that I believe, I'd like to raise to the city because I think these are outside of the school's concern. And that is some of that traffic on Mesa Verde Drive East. How do I, sir? Can I progress? So, I, um, there's a stretch on Mesa Verde Drive East between Baker up north and Adams down south. Uh, thank you. That, uh... Does this work? Oh, okay. I'll just press the button. Okay. Um, I affectionately call it the Costa Mesa Raceway. Uh, it is a half a mile stretch with no stop signs, no crosswalks, no pedestrian safety permissions whatsoever. Uh, it's a twisting road, and so there's a lot of blind corners. There's trees lining the way. There's schools on either side of it, whether it's Adams Elementary on the west, now two schools, hopefully, on the east side. Uh, and this is a, this is a street I cross, across four times a day. Uh, that's 1,460 times a year at least. I have to push my baby across the street. I have to run to cross the street because don't, no car is stopping, which is a little crazy. Like, cars not stop for kids in the street. They do not stop for strollers. They not stop for a guy walking his dog. Um, and I think a lot of cars cut through here because they want to avoid some of the traffic on Mesa, uh, sorry, on Harbor and Adams. So, they cut through, they're not residents. This is turning into a primary residential area. A lot of the residences have turned into, or sorry, a lot of the businesses have turned to residences. I have, if we go to the next one, just a few pictures I took because I crossed the street so many times where there's blind corners. Uh, if we go to the next one, it's really hard to see around these trees. It's hard to see around the corner. Perhaps we can go to the next one as well. You can see, there's a lot of blind corners. It's difficult to cross. And if we go to the next one, I put together some simple math. I'm not asking anyone to do the math. I'm just saying it takes more time to cross the street at an average walking pace of 4.7 feet per second, according to Wikipedia, than it does a car to actually hit you. Uh, you can see that 13 and a half seconds is less than 15 seconds. Uh, so, uh, and you probably don't want to be doing the math as you're crossing the street. There's more examples of this depending on where the car is coming from. Uh, maybe if we go to the next two slides ahead. Uh, I'm hoping that we can use this opportunity, in addition to bringing the school, to then revisit some of the, uh, some of the inevitable increase in cars. I'm hoping there's going to be more kids in the area. They will hopefully be crossing the street along with me. I'm hoping we can protect them so that some of the items that Mr. Toler referred to earlier around some of the recent tragedies, I'm hoping we can be proactive so that we don't have to read about a tragedy before we decide to protect some of the children in the neighborhood. So...
Uh, thank you, Mr. Emerald. Um, Mr. Japkin? If Mr. Emerald wanted to discuss further his ideas for how to make, um, the particular stretch he's referring to, which I think is from Mesa Verde East all the way up to Baker, because that Baker is the first crosswalk that exists, who it's in staff could he speak to? Be Mrs., Ms. Rosales? Okay, so, great. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, good evening. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak here on behalf of Renaissance School International. My name is Heather Reeves. I'm a Costa Mesa property owner and I'm also a Costa Mesa business owner. And I'm a long-term parent of Renaissance School. My two children have attended the school for the past six years. And I've served as a volunteer on the Parent Teacher Organization for the past three years as the president. And in addition to the volunteer position, over the past five years, I have also acted in a professional capacity on behalf of the school as the school's real estate broker in pursuit of a permanent residence for the school. So, as you can see, I'm highly, highly invested and extremely dedicated to positive outcomes for my children and their future growth within the Renaissance community. I should also note, I grew up in Newport Mesa, uh, area, and can say that RSI is unparalleled in the level of education, community involvement, and overall whole child approach to learning and leadership. My children at six and eight years old not only speak three languages, when they speak only English at home, I do not speak multiple languages unfortunately, um, but they speak three languages and are also extremely positive, caring, self-motivated individuals. And I credit so much of their behavior, temperament, and overall sense of self-worth, worth to their experience at RSI. I'd love to take credit as a parent, but the bulk of their time has been spent at the school being educated in this amazing environment. I would also like to speak briefly about the tireless pursuit of a permanent property for RSI and how difficult that has been in order to land where we're at today. Over the past five years, we have searched all over Orange County for a new site, and we always come back to Costa Mesa as RSI's home. In the pursuit of these sites, we have hit roadblocks that have made it clear that any other property is not the right fit for the school. Whether that be due to space, cost, location, or just simply being outbid in the process, we have experienced numerous hard nos as we have sought to find the perfect home for RSI. In October 2020, the 1,600 Adams site came to the top of our search. The location is perfect as it is right around the corner from our long-existing Mesa Verde location, as we've noted, creating minimal impact to the commute times for our hard-working parents. It also allows for the appropriate level of growth and flexibility for our ever-evolving and growing student population. As I look to the future and the possibilities for RSI, I imagine a state-of-the-art trilingual experience for my own children and future students that will pass through this building. Also, the ability to build out a state-of-the-art technology, art, and innovative space, a way that would never, something that would never be possible in the past for our school. As an additional bonus, we bring about a partnership with Seegerstrom, a pillar of the Costa Mesa community and an organization focused on cultural and educational awareness within Costa Mesa. Not only will 1,600 Adams create endless possibilities for RSI, but I'm also excited as a local citizen about the dive...
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Denny Reed. I'm the campus director of RSI, K through 12. This is my sixth year being at the school, third year being the campus director. Uh, I'm a Vanguard graduate, 2011, so it's nice to be back somewhat on campus. Uh, and I was thinking, the last time that I've been here, our students, I think some of them were actually here, Kennedy was one of them. The last time I was in this building, we sang the National Anthem, actually, before, uh, the city council meeting. So, we did that here. We also did that at the senior center, I think, when this is being renovated. So, it's nice to be back here. Um, I love RSI. I love RSI for many reasons, but the number one reason is our, is our students and our families. Um, when I tour people at our school, I talk about the language. There's four Rs, four Ls in RSI. There's learning, language, lifestyle, and leadership. You've, you've heard about the language a lot. You've heard about the learning, the academics. But the lifestyle and the leadership is what I think propels us to be one of the best schools around. And it's because of our families, it's because of our students, it's because of the culture that's created. Uh, we have something that we started called the Renaissance Way. It's, it's a culture of leadership, and there's a LEED acronym. It's LEED, Leadership, Excellence, Always Safe, and Discipline. Um, and when you get around our students, you get this feeling that they're special. And I know I'm biased because I'm a part of the community, but they're special because their parents are special. Their parents are special because they sacrifice, they give of themselves, they want what's best for their kids. And because of that, when you come to RSI, and this is what I say on a tour if you're going to be a parent at our school, you have to be deeply invested, not just in learning, but the whole child. And our parents are. Our parents are always willing to go the extra mile for the staff and for the students. Um, and, and I wanted to speak real quickly, before I forget, um, to Commissioner Toler about the parking situation. That's, that's one of the things that I'm most passionate about. So, you'll see me, Patrick, I think, visited us a couple times during our drop-off and our pickup loop. I just shared this recently at our PTO meeting as well, what we need to do to accomplish zero traffic on the street. So, we have one entrance and we have one exit. We have two loops going at all time. I have a walkie-talkie. I know every parent's name and the car they drive. And so, we walkie-talkie them when they come out from school. They walk into the car, we open the door, they get in, and they get out. From time to time, parents will have to park, but it'll be very minimal. And that's just at the pickup and drop-off times. If they're coming throughout the day, they need to call the front office or send, uh, the admin an email to let us know that they're coming. And then our security officer should be checking them in. So, I, I'm highly motivated by, motivated by the parking, the driving, the pickup loop. So, that is something that we're very passionate about, and we do that really well. Lastly, in terms of the lifestyle, the last time I was outside of this building was at RSI, uh, Love Costa Mesa Day. Uh, maybe I'm a little biased, but I think we had the most representatives of any school in Costa Mesa. We were here strong. Our students were painting YMCA's, schools, uh, doing car washes, uh, doing, Rock Harbor, I think, was doing, um, stuff for their church, giving out...
Hello, Commission. My name is Christina Nielsen, and we have been residents of Costa Mesa for over 16 years. And I'm also a small business owner here in Costa Mesa. And I am a huge advocate of international learning. I have lived and worked on three continents, and it was something that I really wanted for my children. Um, our family has been at Renaissance School International since day one. You heard from my son, Henry. And we are just, um, so grateful that we learned about it. Very interestingly, I found out about Renaissance. I met Carrie Mazzara at a Pepperdine University alumni function, and neither of us had gone to Pepperdine. So, I, I knew that there was a reason that we met and we stayed in contact. We had no children at that time, and then we later had children. Then we met at Chinese mommy and me class at the Irvine Chinese Cultural Center, and she told me about this developing trilingual school, and it was all meant to be. Um, since our son, Henry, was two years old, we, my husband and I had always wanted our children to learn other languages. And so, we tried this through classes, through the Chinese mommy and me or Chinese daddy and me when my husband took him because I might have been working. And we tried all these levels to try and acquire the Mandarin language, and it just did not work. And the reason is, it's a difficult language to learn through a few hours a week. And when we went to Renaissance School and got into the full immersion program, things clicked and it worked. And so, I'm super grateful that we did that. We really feel that having the functional fluency in reading, writing, and speaking will help our sons really secure good-paying jobs in the future to support their families, depending on what they or their spouses want to do, and also get them a job where they may be able to buy a home and live in Costa Mesa or live in Orange County. And this is becoming so elusive for many people. So, having these strong educational and language and advanced skills is just so important for earning those kinds of high-paying jobs to be able to stay here and not, not move far away from dad night. Um, we really feel like Renaissance provides this amazing opportunity for families in Costa Mesa to provide their children high-level academics and true trilingual literacy. And our son recently passed the fluency exam in Mandarin, along with previously passing the Spanish and English. So, it was proof of concept that day, and it really validated the journey my husband and I have been on for over 11 years. And, and our other son is currently in the school right now. And just as an interesting note, we know of a family that moved to Singapore to get the language immersion, and they could have just lived here in Costa Mesa and been able to do the same thing. So, I'm super grateful to Carrie Mazzara for all that she has done and persevered. We need this new campus to continue our presence in Costa Mesa. Um, I would just be thrilled to stay and having my children in the school in Costa Mesa. And our hope is that we can continue to grow students in our community.
Thank you. Uh, just so you know, the microphone cuts off automatically. I'm not being rude.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Michael Clem. Uh, I am here tonight to voice my support for the approval of the CEP application for RSI. Uh, as a resident and business owner, homeowner here in Costa Mesa, I, uh, feel very strongly that our local residents and the city of Costa Mesa at large, um, are in need of unique and forward-thinking educational opportunities. Over the past 10 years, uh, plus, RSI has brought innovative and challenging curriculum that will prepare their students to be diversity-minded, global citizens and leaders. I believe that the location they've chosen is, is well-sitted to take them to the next level and give them a home, uh, long into the future. Uh, it's obviously centrally located within the city, has a perfect setup with ample parking and drop-off areas such that I believe the normal traffic flow, uh, should not be affected. An additional benefit I believe that RSI brings to our city is that it draws residents from outside of Costa Mesa to our community to spend time and resources supporting many local businesses. Additionally, I feel like the, um, the residents from other cities get a chance to, to know our city a bit better. And as I understand it and has been shown here tonight, several of those have decided to relocate to Costa Mesa, uh, so they can be closer to school, which I think is great for the city as well. So, in closing, I hope that the members of the Commission agree that RSI has been and will continue to bring tremendous, uh, benefit to our city and, and well beyond for many years to come. I urge you to approve their CEP application. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, good evening. My name is Matt Christensen. I'm a resident of Costa Mesa for the past 15 years. I own the Stretch Lab on 17th Street. I'm also a commercial real estate broker and have processed several conditional use permits, uh, in the Sobeka, uh, area. So, I'm very familiar with this process with the city. I want to lend my support to the, uh, the school. I have two, two kids there who've been attending for six years. And I can tell you from a real estate perspective, it is incredibly difficult to either move a standard business these days, let alone a school. Um, so, there's not a lot of opportunities in, anywhere in Orange County to house a school of this nature. And I, I just want to express my gratitude to Ms. Mazzara. Uh, whenever anyone asks, can you explain the school to me? My only word is exceptional, and, uh, I want to stay in the city where I live. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, can you hear me? My name's Deanna Law. I'm a parent at RSI. I've been there for seven years. I have three children. And I'm one of the parents who commute. And I think something important to note is because I commute to Costa Mesa, I put my kids in after-school activities in Costa Mesa. I carpool with other families that live in Huntington, and we commute together. And we all put our kids into activities in Costa Mesa. And I've looked at other schools. They don't offer what RSI offers, and it would be really difficult for me personally, my children's life to be completely uprooted if RSI was to move out of Costa Mesa. And I think that's something really important for most of our families. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Dr. Mary Pham, and I'm a longtime resident and small business owner of Lollipop Pediatric Dentistry in Costa Mesa, um, on the corner of Harbor and Adams. Um, our practice provides specialty dental care to infants and children, to the families in our amazing community. I serve many patients and families from RSI, and I'm grateful for this community and school who supports my local business and trusts me with their children's dental care. My residential home is about one block behind the proposed location of the new RSI campus, and Eric Emery is also my neighbor. My children have been students at RSI since they were toddlers at two years old, and they are now in kindergarten and second grade. As my children have grown up at RSI, I have been extremely impressed by the level of academic knowledge, cultural enrichment, growth in leadership, and overall care and concern for my children since they started as toddlers at RSI about five years ago. RSI has distinguished itself through its academic curriculum, unique cultural experiences, and leadership development of its students, not only locally, but internationally as well. RSI has also played a large role in always supporting our local community by volunteering at events such as Love Costa Mesa and by supporting our local Women's and Children's Shelter and encouraging our students and families to support our local Costa Mesa community at various events throughout the year. RSI's administration and educators are a dedicated, passionate, enthusiastic team of professionals that really truly care about our children and our community. It's such a huge asset to have a business and school that supports, that supports our amazing city of Costa Mesa and also our local businesses. I believe that RSI will be a valuable addition to our neighborhood, bringing value to families looking for cultural enrichment and superb academics to our community. And I support without reservation the new location for RSI. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Caitlin Swigert. I'm a Costa Mesa resident, a parent of three children, only two of whom are yet at RSI, and I hope the third one will grow old enough to get there as well. And I just wanted to say that I echo what all the other parents have said. I also, as a resident, are, I'm extremely concerned about bike safety, pedestrian safety, driving safety. And I'm so grateful to hear all of the thoughtful questions that you have put to us, um, you know, about safety. And I just wanted to advocate that this team of professionals and families are very focused on safety. I've been at the, uh, location, uh, the old, the other location at Mesa Verde and Baker, this new location at Mesa Verde and Baker. And as a, from the parent's perspective, this is a team very focused on safety in terms of their communication, uh, with all of the families. They're also very focused on the safety of all of the students and have put a lot of, uh, investment into safety for our children. Uh, but also, they instill in the children good habits and good practices to protect themselves at school as well. So, it's a very safety-oriented group of people. And I just want to say, these were... be amazing partners in improving safety generally on Adams Avenue going into the future. Great long-term partners because they really do walk their talk. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in chambers that wishes to speak to this item? No? Do we have anyone on Zoom, Anna?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So I'll close the public comment portion of the hearing. Ms. Mazzara, do you have any further comments or response you'd like to make?
I do not, except I just want to correct one thing. I earlier said that we would not have plans for bicycles. We actually, I think, in the plan is allowed for bicycles for the school. So just no cars for high schoolers.
And before you sit down, Commissioners, any further questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll close public comment. Commissioners, any further questions for staff?
Yeah. If I will, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Going, circling back to the driveway access for Adams, will someone let me know what the driveway width is? And then I don't know if I fully understood this, but the, so the Adams Boulevard or the Adams driveway has right-turn restrictions for ingress and egress, but the Mesa Verde driveway is full access with no restrictions? Or does that one have restrictions as well?
So Commissioner Vavar, Scott Drapkin, Assistant Director. With regards to the right-hand turn from the site onto Adams Avenue, that, when that, that component of the project has been conditioned to go through traffic at a later point to determine a dedicated right-hand turn movement. It's also going to include a directional component which forces the turn movement. It will be, like you mentioned, a one-way right-hand turn exit only, and then which will prevent also the potential left-hand turn. We also spoke with, staff also spoke about possibly putting some other type of restrictive element in the center median to prevent left-hand turns in that area. The only issue with doing that is there's other properties along that area where a left-hand turn might still be necessary. So that's something that is to be later looked at. With regards to Mesa Verde Drive East, both left-hand turns are allowed and right-hand turns, depending on the direction you're coming from on that right-of-way into the parking lot.
Okay. Is the driveway width being modified at all along Adams, or will it remain whatever width it is now?
I anticipate that the driveway width will probably get smaller, but again, that's just me projecting my less-than-engineering skills on what could potentially have. But at this point, it's something to be later submitted, so postpone submittal.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Drapkin. Mr. Chairman, I think that's it for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais. Do we have a motion? A motion by Commissioner Russell. What is that?
Yes, I'd like to move that the Planning Application 22-17 for a conditional use permit to allow a private K-12 school, Renaissance School International, in the C1 zone for the property at 1600 Adams Avenue and 2850 Mesa Verde Drive East. We found that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, Seco Section 15301 Class 1, existing facilities, and Section 15332 Class 32 infill, and two approved Planning Application 22-17, subject to conditions of approval.
Commissioner Russell, if I may, does that, a motion also incorporate staff's recommended modifications to condition of approval number two and four?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'd like to second that.
Okay, Commissioner Rojas, second. Commissioner Russell, would you like to speak to your motion?
Well, obviously, the students are incredibly impressive in terms of leadership and being able to speak languages. I mean, it's a great, it's a really unique school, and I'm really proud, A, that it is in Costa Mesa, and that they found a place with the assistance of the secretums and real estate agents to be able to stay here. So it's exciting to see that. My only, the only thing I would say is it would be in my fantasy to blow up part of all those parking spots and put in some more green space so the kids have more area to be outside, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rojas?
Just want to echo Commissioner Russell's comments, as well as thank the parents and the strong support that you guys provided today, the information on behalf of the real estate brokers as well. Very informative. I believe in that, in your efforts that you're going to make it safe and efficient. I mean, it goes without saying that you guys have done a great job, and so I wish you the best on that.
Thank you. Commissioner Toller?
Yeah, I'm in support of the motion. Thank you for everybody that commented tonight. I would, I don't think it's, it should be part of the entitlement process, but I would ask staff to keep a close eye on those conflict points we talked about when we're going through Plan Check and keeping in mind there's a new school with lots of cars going in and out when we put in those Adams improvements. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. Commissioner Vavar, any comments?
Yes, sir. I'd like to, first of all, lend my support to the motion and to the project. I think it's a wonderful project. I'm glad that the school administrators were able to find a location that is suitable and that is so close to their existing site and to their original site. So I'm glad that you guys are able to stay in Costa Mesa to offer this, honestly, very rare educational opportunity to our Costa Mesa students and children. So thank you for that service, for that dream of that language school that you brought to Costa Mesa and for continuing that for our community. The one thing, though, I would like to add, Mr. Chairman, if I will, is I think that, you know, in terms of the concerns for safety that we've been talking about over the course of a conversation, and Mr. Drapkin's note about the center median or whatever it is there that might not be feasible, would the maker and the second or the motion be open to adding the R3-2, no left-turn sign facing the traffic from the driveway? It's a very low-cost method that I think could, you know, increase safety in terms of the conflicts that Mr. Toller or the Commissioner Toller was referring to.
Let me ask a question before we get Commissioner Russell to respond to that question. The question is to staff. That sign designation, is that something that you have evaluated for appropriateness and applicability?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. So Commissioner Russell?
Now, is, are the signs part of a separate signage discussion that you'll have later?
Correct.
Yes. So I'm not, I don't, how much, I guess the question is, is that going to make it a lot more complicated for them to have this additional requirement? Or is it something that we can?
I think it's something that the Commission could add, and we, staff could include into the conditions of approval. And what I would prefer is that if the Commission added, as a condition, for staff to research and review the possibilities of including that. And I think that was Commissioner Vavar's intention to begin with, but I can't say for certain.
Correct.
Okay, so we're just adding a condition that they, that staff review and?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Commissioner Rojas?
I'll continue my second on that support.
Okay. Commissioner Vavar, you, any more comments?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay. I'll be supporting the motion. I think there is going to be a logistical challenge. You'll work your way through that as you get settled into your new quarters. Safety, signage, people's habits, you'll have to work with that. One thing that's clear to me and should be clear to everyone is successful students almost always are a result of involved parents. And when you have a school like you do, where parents are there by choice, not because they just happen to live in a particular zone, you tend to have that involvement by definition. And I think the results of the education are reflected there. And then the last comment I'd make is the conditions of approval are there for a reason. And I would just want to make it clear to you that if you have any challenges as you're trying to operate, that what you do is you reach out to staff and you try to work through those. The last thing you want to do is to evaluate a condition as being not particularly important, go your own way, and then find yourselves on the opposite side of a line you don't want to be. So any challenge you have, you know staff is there to help and support you as they have through this process. Okay? All right. Anna, a call for the question, please. Anna, could we do a voice vote?
Vice Chair Zick?
Aye.
Commissioner Rojas?
Aye.
Commissioner Toller?
Aye.
Commissioner Russell?
Aye.
Commissioner Vavar?
Aye.
That motion carries 5-0 with Chair Diarco absent and Commissioner Erith abstaining.
Thank you very much. And that decision is final unless appealed to the City Council within seven days. Good luck to all of you. Could we have someone to retrieve Commissioner Erith? Okay. And how are people with a break? Do you need a break?
Thanks, yes.
Okay, we'll take a 10-minute break.
I don't know what happened. They keep clicking out of it.
I know.[1383.14] All right, welcome back. We are ready for our third public hearing. Anna, could you read that into the record?
Public hearing item number three. Planning application 21-29 for retail cannabis storefront business located at 170 East 17th Street, Suites 115 and 116 Catalyst. Please note, we have received public comments on this item that have been provided to the commission and made a part of the record. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
Thank you, Anna, and welcome back. Commissioner Erith, any ex parte communications to report?
Thank you, Chair, I do. I stopped by the subject property this weekend and talked to Andy or Andrew Ramirez for about 15 minutes, current property tenant.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Vavar?
Yeah, oh, sorry about that. Yes, I also had a conversation with the tenant at the property in question tonight for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Russell?
Several weeks ago, I met with some of the other people that have businesses in that building.
Commissioner Toller?
Yes, I met with the applicant on a Zoom call. I feel like a year ago where they presented their project and were available for questions.
Okay, great. Commissioner Rojas?
No, no, I'm driving the site for inspection, but that was it.
Okay, and I visited the site, had opportunity to speak to the property owner and one of the tenants. So let's see, it looks like Ms. Nguyen is ready for a presentation, please. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Vice Chair Zick, and good evening, commissioners. My name is Nancy Nguyen, Senior Planner with the Economic and Development Services Department. The item before you tonight is planning application 21-29, which is a CUP for a retail cannabis storefront, which is proposed at 170 East 17th Street, Suites 115 and 116. The proposed state license for the storefront is a Type 10. The applicant is not proposing to offer retail delivery at this location. And the proposed business name is Catalyst. The applicant has successfully completed the initial steps, excuse me, initial application steps, including pre-application and CBP, before submitting a CUP application. So if the CUP is submitted, if the CUP is approved tonight, the applicant would continue on to the remaining steps, which would include issuance of a CBP. So as mentioned, the proposed storefront is located at 170 East 17th Street, which is highlighted in the dashed yellow line on these two images here. So the subject property is Zone C1, which is the local business district. Existing development on the property consists of two commercial buildings that are connected by a breezeway. And the buildings are two-story and both total approximately 19,000 square feet. As you can see on the zoning map, the property is surrounded by also other commercially zoned properties. Here are some site photos of the existing property, which shows the current condition. The building was constructed around 1960s and is currently occupied by a variety of uses, including a hair salon, a general offices, a tile store, and a custom framing shop. The suites at the proposed storefront would be located in is currently occupied by Coast of Vacuum and Sewing Center. The proposed location of the retail storefront is highlighted in red on the proposed site plan. And as you can see in the site plan, the project site has existing landscaping, including trees, 74 legal non-conforming parking spaces in the surface lot. And while not shown here, but there is an existing bicycle rack along the breezeway. However, the applicant does propose to improve the existing site by restricting the parking spaces to comply with the city's standard, city's parking design standard, excuse me, add six new 15-gallon trees on site, and construct new public sidewalk along Fullerton Avenue. In addition, the applicant will be conditioned to process a lotline adjustment so that the provided parking spaces, which are currently on three separate parcels, would be all on one parcel with the subject property. This is the proposed floor plan. And similarly, as other floor plans for retail cannabis storefronts, it includes a retail sales area and a back-of-house area. So the retail sales area is, of course, shown in green, which includes a separate check-in lobby. And the remainder of the facility would be back-of-the-house area to support the retail operation. In terms of the proposed building exterior improvements, the applicant proposes minimal improvements. However, they would, excuse me, those improvements would include new windows, doors, paint, and signage. Many of the proposed improvements are, will actually be to the interior of the tenant space in order to create the rooms for the storefront. So the applicant provided a detailed business plan that was evaluated by the city's Cannabis Consultant, HDL. As a reminder, it's not attached to this report since it contains proprietary details. However, the business plan does describe the owner's professional experience as well as proof of capitalization. In addition to a business plan, the applicant also submitted a professionally-prepared security plan, also reviewed by our consultant, HDL. HDL determined that the appropriate security measures were included to address both the city and state requirements. As with the other retail cannabis CBPs, there are also more than 50 standard conditions of approval, including no on-site consumption, age restrictions, compliance with state regulations, and CBP renewal. In addition to the standard ones, staff has also proposed some site-specific conditions, including requiring a lotline adjustment to be submitted and recorded, construct new public sidewalk per city standards, and provide bicycle rack and storage lockers within the interior of the facility for employees who bike to work. So with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, per SEQA Guideline Section 15301, as well as approve planning application 21-29, subject to conditions of approval. This does conclude staff's presentation. I'm available to answer any question. And the applicant is also available and has also prepared a presentation for the commission tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. And shout out to HDL for being here. In case there's any questions, appreciate you being here. Commissioners, Commissioner Erith, any questions of staff?
Thank you, Chair. I do have a couple of questions. Thank you, Ms. Nguyen, for the presentation. It's always a good one. We can start with, let's see here, Agenda Page 2 of 6, under Shared Parking with Adjacent Car Wash. It says such improvements bring the site into greater conformance with code requirements. And I'm not, I guess it wasn't clear exactly what they're doing to get it closer to the code.
I'm sorry, are you referring to the, which paragraph?
It's the first paragraph, under Shared Parking with Adjacent Car Wash subtitle or subheading. Right in the middle of that paragraph, it says, "And such improvements bring the site into greater conformance with code requirements." I just, if you could just go through a couple of things to illustrate how they're proposing to get into more conformity, please.
Sorry, I just had to find that paragraph.
That's okay. It's a big paragraph, too.
Yes, so they are proposing to improve the landscaping, providing additional trees within the parking lot. And in addition to also restriping the parking lot itself to comply with the city's parking design standards. And while it won't gain any parking spaces, it does not result in any loss of parking spaces.
Okay, so trees and restriping.
Yes, and in addition to that, there's also a new sidewalk, new public sidewalk, proposed.
Great, thank you, Ms. Nguyen. And second question, in Attachment Number 2, Page 1 of 12, under Number 1, describe the business project description. In the middle of that paragraph, it says, let's see here. Catalyst Costa Mesa is on a mission to bring its, quote, "weed-for-the-people" mantra to Costa Mesa. I assume if that's a running mantra or an advertising statement, that that would not be allowed on the building's exterior. Is that correct?
That would have to be reviewed further for compliance with any signage, conditions of approval, or standards for the adopted ordinance as it relates to cannabis businesses.
Okay, and I think the reason why I ask is because the, it reads that we can't say cannabis, weed, or have any depiction therein.
Correct.
So I'm just trying to make the connection there. Thank you. And let me see if I have one more question here. You know what, I think that is all for now. Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Vavar?
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Nguyen, for your presentation. Good to see you. Just have a quick question regarding the, shall we say, decision-making process for what policies we look at in the general plan conformance. So two items ago, we looked at an application that had land use element 6.7 about the retaining existing businesses and encouraging new ones. Is there a reason that that one isn't used more often for plan conformance?
Yeah, so when, thank you, Commissioner Vavar. So when staff drafts the report and as we evaluate the each CUP application or any planning application, we do review it against the most appropriate policy, general plan policies and objectives. And based on that, these are the ones that staff has determined would be appropriate. While there are many available that would also, could also be appropriate, these are the ones that staff has decided to discuss.
So is there kind of a qualitative review for how that, those policies are selected? For each application?
Correct.
Okay, that's it for me, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Russell?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Toller?
No questions right now, thank you.
Commissioner Rojas?
No questions, sir.
All right, I've got a couple of questions. So on page, let's see, let me find that again. Handwritten Page 8. The Condition of Approval Number 11. Handwritten Page 8, Condition of Approval Number 11, talks about a park, the requirement for a parking management plan including techniques described in Operational Condition of Approval Number 7. And I find operational condition of approval number 7 on Page, handwritten Page 14. And it sounds to me like that's talking about something totally different. So.
Yes, Vice Chair Zick, that is called Scribner's error. It should be referencing Operational Condition Approval Number 6, which is the one that's preceding Number 7.
Perfect. And is that just a change you'll make? Or does that need to be, when we get to the point of emotion, does that need to be clarified, or you just take care of that?
We can, we will take care of that.
Okay. And then handwritten Page 12. So I see we've got the Condition of Approval Number 12. On handwritten Page 12, talks about this application for lotline adjustment being required prior to issuance of building permit. And then the accomplishment of that having to be recorded prior to final building inspection. Now, there's an indication in the staff report that something similar to this had been required in the past and was never done. So my question is, what is the specific process mechanism that the city will be using to ensure that these two conditions are followed?
So currently, we have mechanisms that we keep in digital to remind us when projects go through an application status is. Mostly, we have project reminders for addresses, which allows staff to recognize when there's some outstanding conditions. We also include conditions on plans. When they, when they go through, we make the applicant do that. We have a couple of ways of reminding ourselves, but mostly, in this situation, we recognize, especially with these applications, that a lot of these applications come with conditions. So we monitor them very closely. so we monitor them very closely. I can't speak for the previous staff where this was missed, but I can tell you this staff doesn't miss.
And that, and that's fine, and I wasn't trying to poke at that. I just wanted to know, for example, once plan check is complete, and the applicant is told that plan check's complete, your contractor can come down and pick up building permits, how specifically will we know at that point whether this first action has been complied with?
Yeah, Vice Chair Zick, so this condition is required prior to the issuance of building permit. It's kind of a twofold condition, as you mentioned. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, they would have to submit the lotline adjustment, get that processed, and prior to, I believe, its final inspection, which, a final building inspection, that it would be, have to be a recorded lotline adjustment. The other thing I'd like to point out, too, is that there are multiple inspections throughout this cannabis business process, not just the plan check with the building inspection and planning and fire. There's also the CVP, or prior to the issuance of the CVP. We also do another inspection where we double-check everything. I think the saying's, what is it, cross our Ts, dot our Is?
Excellent, thank you very much for that. Any other questions for staff? No? Okay. So I'd like to open the public hearing, invite the applicant to come forward. And as you're coming forward, can you tell me if you've read the staff report and the conditions of approval, and do you agree with them?
Yes, we're fine with the, the conditions of the approval, and we're very versed in making sure that all these conditions get met.
Okay, so your name for the record, and the floor is yours.
My name's Elliot Lewis, CEO of Catalyst Cannabis Co., also manager of Catalyst Costa Mesa. Just, staff did such a great job on the report. I'm going to go through a lot of these quickly, because they covered a lot of the stuff that we are going to cover. I do want to start off by addressing the weed-for-the-people mantra. That's who we are. By the way, the sign will be out front, keep it really mellow. Next slide, sorry Nancy. You won't even know that it's a cannabis dispensary unless you were to, you know, somehow end up inside of it. You know, look, our mission is simple, to build a fully-integrated dispensary there at 170 East 17th Street. Our motto is pretty basic, weed-for-the-people, and that's something that's really important to us. It's not just branding, it's not just hashtagging. Take good care of our customers, good care of our employees, and the community is really important to us. So, any issues that come up, buck stops with us, we'll make sure it happens. We're also really proud that all our members are unionized, those come with health care, come with 401K, jobs that they could, with respect and dignity. Next slide, that's going to be the ownership. I'll let each guy kind of talk on themselves, so we can go to next slide. This is my ugly mug there. Anyway, in my former life, was a real estate developer, did about 700 homes, starting in 2013, kind of got into cannabis. Since then, we have 13 open stores, working on about another 20 that are under development. Should have about 19, 20 open at the end of the year. Another thing we're really proud of is the work we've done on social equity. We have made changes to different policies in different cities. We've even started our own private sector incubator program for a social equity applicant that's working in Long Beach to help individuals who are impacted on the war on drugs.
Next slide.
Next slide. So here's our Belmont Shore store. Again, it's really discreet, this is our first one, we call it Baby Belmont, high-end retail corridor, nobody knows we're there. Another important point to make that I can make here is that the surrounding businesses, they end up loving us. We drive foot traffic, we increase economic activity, and we bring security. Next, next slide, Cherry, you know, another really good store for us in Long Beach. Next one is San Ana, we kind of just, next slide, Bell, next slide. Next one is Bellflower, it's a campus, it has our distribution, and our manufacturing, and a retail dispensary there as well. Go through the next slide. I want to, this one's Eastside, another Long Beach store, we call it Eastside. Go ahead, next slide. This one, I just want to stop and mention these two real quick. Really proud of the work we've done at 433 Pine, was a neighborhood that needed a little bit of uplifting, we've gone in there. You know, my wife and her friend did the landscaping ourselves, we hung lights, we've done, you know, we've even taken a couple spaces next door to just keep redeveloping the area, and we've been an economic engine for that. We, we're, you know, all the businesses around us, the residents, are just, you know, super happy that we're there. We have a monthly block party now, it's become like a whole regeneration of Long Beach. Catalyst Florence is a social equity license that we have, we're really, really proud of that. Next one is El Monte, also Pomona, we're doing something similar that we did in downtown Long Beach. We have Marina, next slide, Marina up in Central Coast, Palm Desert, next slide, Hemet, and then I want to stop for a minute on San Bernardino. We help with the operations on that one, with the Oganesean Brothers, who are our partners here at Catalyst, partners on several dispensaries now, we work really well together, it's a great synergy, so, working out really well for us there in San Bernardino. Next slide.
Thanks. Thank you, Elliot. My name is Damian Martin, I'm an attorney and co-founder for Catalyst Cannabis Co., one of the most prominent attorneys in the space, working on cannabis ordinances, applications, regulations. In fact, I'm really proud of it, I have eight measures on the ballot in the LA County that I either authored or co-authored. Next slide, please. One of our owners is also Dr. Gregory Smith, he can't be here tonight, he's out doing doctor stuff. He's really on the cutting edge of, you know, looking at cannabis as really medicine, we're working with him on product development. Next slide, he's, you know, produced two movies that really take a hard look at the pharmaceutical industry. Next slide, Nancy. Thank you very much. Next slide, I want to turn it over to Jordan Ferguson.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, Jordan Ferguson from Venable. I represent Ryan and Darren Oganesean, part of the joint venture here this evening. Just to give you a little bit of background on Ryan and Darren, they are fourth-generation members of the waste industry, they have been pioneers in the space, they have a combined 40 years of experience in the highly-regulated waste industry. They've also been involved in the cannabis industry since Proposition 215 passed. They have a fully vertically-integrated operation, they do cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, and delivery throughout the state of California. So they have literal decades of experience in two different highly-regulated industries, including cannabis waste, the cannabis waste industry, and creating the CanaCycle recycling program for vape pens. So they have been in this industry for a long time, they have been in the waste industry for a long time, they know about regulations and compliance. We're really excited about the opportunity here in Costa Mesa, and we're around, happy to answer any questions. Darren Oganesean is here as well this evening.
Next slide? That's both of them. All right, next slide from there. A lot of this stuff was covered, but these are our hours, our operations and such, it's 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. One thing that I do want to emphasize, it was really cool, we went down there, we spoke with the tenants, when they're kind of closing up, that's our busier hours, so I think it will be least impact on adjacent businesses. Top-of-line, you know, security systems, we use trees, point of sales, at any time you could log in, see where we're going, so you make sure they're getting their tax money. We sell every product under the sun, from full medical capsules, flower, vape, you name it, we do it. You know, we put some financials in here, go, next slide. Going back to the weed-for-the-people mantra, which is, you know, a really important part of who we are, we run our prices, you know, we say fireweed, fire prices lower than anybody, but what's that translate for the city? Higher volume, the sales are based on gross amounts, so that means more tax money, so we're really proud of that, and that's, you know, to put money back in the pockets of the customers, but also puts pocket in the money of the cities. We have our labor employment agreement, I touched on that earlier, something we're really proud of. We have a statewide labor accretion agreement, so we don't have to renegotiate a contract when, when, sorry, thanks Damian. So when, you know, the, we get a new store, it just automatically goes under that bargaining agreement. I touched on, you know, some of the issues, starting wage $17 an hour, working hard to push that up, but comes with full benefit, benefits, next slide, sorry, health care, 401K, they have built-in raises, all sort of sorts of nice, really good worker protections. Next slide. And then, look, our mantra, weed-for-the-people, also means being a good neighbor, and kind of how I went through in Pine, and just the way we do things, it's really important for us that if there are any issues, we address them immediately. Like I said, the buck stops with us, we're kind of a, you know, growing, a large cannabis dispensary, but I always say we're really nimble, that's what kind of makes us unique, and, you know, that's part of our weed-for-the-people philosophy also here. You require 24-hour onsite guard, so I think a lot of the tenants going through and talking to them, we're very happy. This is a picture of the, of the place, you know, to me, this is the best property in Costa Mesa, to put a retail dispensary, no bias aside, by the way, we've got to know the owners really well, we've been in the trenches with them, really cool local guys, I feel like we're all here as a family, so that's another cool thing. Again, we control the smell really well, it is all pre-packed, it's now not as big of issue as it used to be since July of 18th, but we got all the stuff in there to make sure we're hitting those boxes. Cash handling procedures, we got those down, there's a safe in there that gets all the money, we, next slide, please. We do have two banks that allow us to deposit money, it is expensive and cumbersome, nonetheless, we are able to do it. Hopefully, by the time we open, maybe in the lame duck session, the Fed passes safe banking, but anyway, we're well-versed in cash handling. Next slide. You already showed this, next slide. So I really want to focus on, next slide, our catalyst cares, this is who we are, this is not just something we do, this is the core of our being and who we are, right? Sometimes, you know, our activism in quotes gets a lot of headlines, but at the end of the day, what we're really doing is the core work, uplifting our community. No matter where we go, we always try to give more than we receive, try to find out where there's need, you know, we've given out over a million pounds of foods, toy drives, food, you know, you know, when Long Beach took in immigrant kids, we made sure they had books, you know, backpacks, you name it, we're doing it, cleanups. So we always want to be a net positive to the community, it's something that we're really proud of. It's a, you know, organization that we started that continues to grow. Just one quick correction, I think we're up to about 300 union jobs, this is 125 on the slide. Next, next slide, please. The vast majority, we went around, we did a survey, vast majority of our neighbors support the project, so everybody's been really cool about it, and it seems to have a lot of support. We have addressed a couple of tenant issues, I think they've sent emails, they are now supportive of the project, we made sure the tenant was moving out, was, you know, all taken care of, as well as, you know, some of the other people that had, you know, issues with the project, we have addressed them and solved them all. And in closing, you know, look, I'll just say this, we appreciate the time to present, you know, we're really looking forward to, you know, opening a dispensary in Costa Mesa, you know, we put our operations up there against anybody on the planet, and when it comes to community outreach, how we treat our workers, and just coming at it with all heart, that's who we are, we're Catalyst Cannabis Co. One last thing, weed-for-the-people.
Thank you for that very energetic and fast-paced presentation. All right. So let's see, do we have any questions for the applicant? Let's start with Commissioner Rojas.
I have none, thank you.
Commissioner Toler?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Russell?
No questions.
Wow. Commissioner Vavari?
Okay, unfortunately, I do have questions. You know, there's always that guy, right? Anyways, thank you for your presentation, it was very thorough, very quick, so thank you for your information. I do have two quick questions. One, so you mentioned the social equity license, what exactly do you mean by that?
So that Los Angeles one, we're partnered with, so what Los Angeles did is they awarded 200 individuals that lived in super, certain zip codes, that, you know, had certain income requirements, and/or were impacted on the war on drugs. So we're the 49% partner, this person is the 51% partner. But what we're really proud of, that we did for a small company, we took 200,000 of our own pocket, and all the manpower and the training, since we had, you know, licenses in Long Beach, delivery licenses that came with the brick and mortar that we weren't using, because we had four, we offer him up to a social equity applicant that hadn't been successful in their process yet, we gamed him up, he's now delivering, it's 15 months running, it's the only successful social equity applicant to date, they're about to issue eight brick and mortars in Long Beach. So we're really proud of that, that's just something we did, that wasn't a governmental requirement, we did it because it was the right thing to do.
All right. So, what led you to pick the site in question tonight?
Well, so I can give you a little history, my brother does the, the real estate, his name's Tim Lewis, and I told him, look, you know, Costa Mesa, they're going to issue a lot of licenses, so don't even bring me anything that's not a ten site. It's exactly what happened, right? So he reached out to one of the Jewell brothers, we started talking, you know, it was a popular property, a lot of people were trying to get it, you know, they believed in what we were doing, we built a good rapport. Like I said, I think that's going to be one of the best locations as far as parking, location, you know, least impact on residents around us. So, you know, obviously, there's always a profit motive when choosing a property, always good to have great parking, but in addition to that, it just seems to fit the community plan really, really well.
And the fact that the unit is occupied factor in to that at all, or how did you kind of go around that?
Yeah, look, we hate to displace tenants, we have worked out some compensation, you know, assuming we get there, and other, and other, you know, things to make sure that, you know, find them a new place and all that. You know, we have no plans to expand further than that. It is an unfortunate situation that, you know, at the end of the day, our existence has displaced that tenant, but, you know, he has, now is in, you know, written that he's in support of the project. So, you know, again, something that we definitely feel bad about, but as part of our mantra and just who we are, we're always going to take care of people that, you know, whether we be relocating them or in any fashion, so we've stepped up and done that here.
If you don't mind sharing, do you know what the compensation is that you're offering them?
Do we have a final number, Dietrich?
Yeah, it was ballpark like 40K, right? Yeah, ballpark 40K. And then some of the discussion was, you know, if we, if we get there, there might be a little, you know, extra on it, and we've even talked amongst ourselves on, you know, how we were going to split that up. Dietrich has done, and which is really cool, we've all, you know, I'm one of the most active landlords that I've ever had involved in the project, and they're local, and, you know, the property's been in their family for 50 years, so he handled a lot of it, I'll let him speak more intelligently than I can on it.
Yes, hi, I'm Dietrich Jewell. I just wanted to tell you that when I started talking with Andrew, he understood what we were, we were doing, and we've decided to give him $20,000 in cash, split between the two of us. We're also been actively looking for a new location for him, we found a couple, and we're also giving him free rent for the, for the time between now and when he, a month and a half from now. So we've been back and forth talking to him almost every day.
So, I'm glad to hear that, and I'm guessing that process was probably recent, right? Or, like when that process started for the sort of relocation help, you could call it?
When did that happen? That happened about a month ago.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, no more questions, and thank you so much for your time and your presentation, for being here tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Erith?
Thank you, Chair. I had a wonderful meeting with your current tenant, Mr. Jewell, Andrew Ramirez. I was, I was at the shop for maybe 15 minutes or so, just checking in, and as luck would have it, it's the same place I, I've gone, and my family have all gone to have our rainbow vacuum serviced for a number of years. So it's no, you know, the site is no stranger to me. So I can say I do appreciate that they're, you know, Andrew is one of the nicest people you'll ever meet, he's very kind and compassionate and very supportive of a range of things, and you don't have to know him long to know that, right? So I'm glad that there's something, you know, that helps assist him, and hopefully, he'll elect to stay in Costa Mesa, so that we don't lose a staple business in this community.
Yeah, and then, you know, we're, you know, kind of started off as real estate guys, so that would definitely be a help. And then, you know, just to be clear, too, there, no matter what happened, whether we were, you know, up last month or this month, when it comes time to talk to a tenant, we're always going to give them replacement money and help them find a place. This is not unique to Costa Mesa, I've done it in probably at least five or six jurisdictions, and in fact, you know, when we are flipping foreclosures, we never, ever, you know, evicted somebody without making them a really nice cash offer, you know, beforehand. So that's just, you know, who we are is, is business people, so just wanted to make that point clear.
Sure, and I, and I can't overstate the importance of, of, you know, just qualitatively having a letter like what was written in support of something like that. So I do appreciate seeing things like that in our packets. With that said, I'll draw your attention to handwritten Page Number 16, this is the application that you put forward. At the bottom of the first paragraph under Number 1, it's Page 1 of 12 for that Attachment Number 2. It says that "The business is custom-tailored and completely integrative and symbiotic with the local neighborhood." And I'm not entirely sure what, what that means, how it's symbiotic.
Well, those are pretty big words written by a really smart attorney, but I will, I will say this, look, you know, you saw a slide from Belmont Shore, right? And the councilwoman there, we have really, in fact, she's running for mayor now, we have really good direct contact. Interestingly enough, she was anti-cannabis going in, anytime she needed something, we tailored it. She didn't want the security guards to be dressed up as fatigue, we tailored it, right? Downtown's a little bit different vibe, it needed some help, we built that up, we tailored it, right? So, Pomona, we're on Holt Street, we're now developing four vacant storefronts, but really, our other 50% partner there is doing most of the lift- Well, really our other 50% partner there is doing most of the lifting. But because of the economic activity, the catalyst, we're tailoring it. So no matter where we go, that's what we're doing. I'm sure, you know, if we're lucky enough to be awarded a license, we'll reach out to the council people, whatever they want. Even if it passes planning, you know, I've always got the approval the best I can of local people before we move forward. And to your point, we want it to be discreet. They'll find us, don't worry. They understand what catalyst means, right? So there won't be weed or any leaf or anything like that. And, you know, look, like I say, the buck stops with me. I went down, met all the tenants. If there's anything they ever need, I work, you know, literally usually eight, nine o'clock every night. I clear my deck and make sure that I return all my calls and address any issues at least that same day, if not the next day. So that's just any location that we open.
Okay. So I appreciate the answer. So I'm just interpreting it as by symbiotic, it's just compliant.
Well, I think symbiotic means, so there's a baseball card store there on the corner. That thing's going to do really well now, right? So I think the symbioticness also comes into people coming into a dispensary and then, hey, I'm already here and buying something else. So I've never had a neighboring business not love us, right? That's just what happens, especially if they're, you know, in retail, they end up really enjoying the economic activity that we, that we drive. And, you know, just kind of to make this point, not to get too philosophical about it, but I do think one of the biggest misnomers out there is that cannabis creates blight. It actually does the reverse. And, you know, post pandemic, post Amazon, who is the new driving economic engine that's in the retail with the kind of young energy? That's the cannabis industry.
Okay. Thank you. That's all from me, Chair.
Thank you. I don't have any questions for you. I'm going to open up public comments, so feel free to have a seat and we'll come back to you. So if anyone in the public would like to speak to this item, please come forward to the podium. You'll have three minutes to share your comments. Yes, sir.
Hi there, everybody. Thank you for hearing me out. My name is Martin. I'm a dispensary manager at Catalyst Santa Ana and first generation immigrant here in the United States. In 2014, I was granted my work visa. That's when I started my journey in the cannabis industry. I've always like had a strong belief that it provides great medical benefits. It's gotten family members through harder times and gotten people away from addiction, and at least in my family. My mom has always been very traditional, very against cannabis. And in 2017, I was actually working for a black market medical cannabis club in which I was part of the, what we called the California crackdown. And that was the first time I ever experienced being on the other side of the law and, you know, seeing the inside of a jail, you know? And those were some of the like worst parts of my life, you know? And I was basically being tried because I was working for, I was just clocking in. I was led to believe that we were a licensed medical club. Unfortunately, we weren't. And yeah, life sucked after that. A couple of years later, my good friend Hazel Martinez called me up and she asked me if I wanted to jump back into the industry. She said she was working for Connected, in which we turned into Catalyst and was telling me that we were going to set the standard for becoming the best recreational cannabis in California. And so like here I am, and I'd like to, you know, be a testament that someone can make, with making the correct decisions and the right moves, you can make a complete 180 from becoming, you know, looking like a criminal to now I'm, you know, a professional in the cannabis industry. I like the company a lot because we create change and uplift the communities that we work in. I used to just have to pick up trash because the court appointed me to. Now I do it because I enjoy it and I, I see the community and how they enjoy our presence there. You know, and we do it through cleanups, through like block parties, you know? Cannabis is a good thing for neighborhoods and communities, and we'd like to show that, you know? And when we say weed for the people, we also mean like we care for every, everybody that comes into our store. And thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Sabrina. I'm an inventory manager and a shop steward at Catalyst location in Santa Ana. First of all, I would just like to thank you all for allowing us the time to talk about something that we are so passionate about, the plant cannabis, of course. I know that we have touched base on like the retail side of cannabis and the medicinal side as well, which is absolutely great. However, I do want to mention how much it does build our communities and with the two years that I've been at Catalyst so far, how we've managed to do that. Just yesterday, we picked up trash around our block, around our shop, 70 pounds we collected. And that's just around our shop. So imagine what we can do once we get this opportunity in Costa Mesa. We greatly care about the cities that we're in and we strive to educate others on cannabis, what they're consuming, the brands that they are consuming as well, because knowledge is power. Thank you so much for being here today and we appreciate this opportunity. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Amber Tovar and I joined Catalyst in 2020. I joined just as the hospitality industry crumbled. You know, it was over. They sent us all home, no more events, no more meetings, no more hotel rooms. And I heard Elliot, our CEO, on Instagram, and he was talking about making the employees essential, essential. That was so important to me at the time, having a mortgage, having a family, needing to provide healthcare. At that time, I just wanted a foot in the door and I started at the front desk. I figured it was the best way for me to understand the retail industry, the cannabis industry, see how he treated the employees. Were they truly essential? Was the community truly essential? And I am so ecstatic to say that what he was saying on Instagram was what I was experiencing. After about nine months, I was promoted to the general manager of the East Side location he mentioned with the social equity partner. It was truly amazing to see someone that just walked in and gave another person a chance. Not only did we have that chance, but we were able to learn from each other. I was able to understand how the delivery system worked as well as learn about cannabis. All of my training was onsite every day. The, the woman that Martin just spoke of, Hazel, she came in for two weeks, trained me, got me up to speed. And I just truly found that the team was focused on policy and community outreach. I had the opportunity to work with the city council in Long Beach to bring in our staff to explain why it was important for us to have a crosswalk. We're on a major street where moms, children are walking to the grocery store or going to school, and there's no crosswalk. We're now in talks with the city council to finalize that crosswalk. I also had the opportunity to work on Long Beach Pride. It's one of the largest pride events in the country. And just six weeks ago, I joined the Catalyst Cares team that you saw on that last slide. There's an entire department that goes out into these stores and into these communities and makes sure that we are symbiotic. We met just this last week with all the business partners and the residences and told them about Catalyst. Here we are, we're coming. What can we do for you and how can you leverage us? We're there with security, we're there with a presence, we clean, and we do come through. Thank you for having us and I look forward to joining you shortly.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Lopez and I am the Community and Digital Organizer for Catalyst Cares from Catalyst Cannabis Company. I've been with this company for three years and like Amber, I did work my way up. I started at front desk to bartender, bartender lead, to assistant manager, to demo manager, and now Community and Digital Organizer for Catalyst Cares. It's been quite a ride, quite a thrill and very rewarding where we can actually put all the skills and life experiences and actually put it to something that's useful to actually help build and enrich and engage the community. And you could imagine all the people that we get are from all different paths and walks of life. But one thing that is in common that we do have is that we love our community and we love the cannabis industry. And Catalyst brings those two together. And it's really nice because it's something that weed for the people brings that no other community or industry or company brings to the table. And just so you know, Catalyst Cares is the community service and policy advocacy for Catalyst Cannabis Company. Catalyst Cares is driven by the passion to help enrich the communities surrounding all Catalyst locations, while the cannabis side of our company is focused on offering good union jobs with living wages and benefits, prioritizing social equity applicants and selling fire weed at fire prices. That is the only beginning of our movement to transform communities we serve. Through the Catalyst Cares Ambassador Program, whom run the Catalyst for Change programming at each store, Catalyst Cares staff and the ambassadors are tasked with managing the following: conducting open houses, coordinating public cannabis education workshops for patients and customers and consumers, building community advisory boards, leading community cleanups, running and supporting food drives and distribution sites, SB 34 programs for veterans, partnering with nonprofits, supporting the LGBTQ plus, and creating spaces for local music and art programs. Needless to say, we are busy. This newsletter, this is my voice and just one of the many that can tell you that Catalyst is here and we're not going anywhere, but we would love to be here in Costa Mesa. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in chambers that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Hello. If I may speak as well. Hi, my name is Valerie Brunage. Thank you for viewing us here on this lovely evening. I am a dispensary manager over at Catalyst Santa Ana and I am a testimony of one of those people that want to do the right thing the right way. So I did not join the cannabis industry until it went legal in 2016 in Santa Ana, when it became recreational as well as medicinal. So what we were able to see during that time was beautiful, safe access to people of all walks of life. So we were able to see our younger, you know, chronic illness patients come in as well as our older veterans and as well as our senior, senior citizens as well. So by providing safe access to cannabis to people of all walks of life, we've been able to really open up the doors to opening eyes of, of seeing herbal medicine being very well available, being able to provide safety during it as well, and really complying with any kind of ordinances that go along with our, with our home here in Orange County. Costa Mesa, being our neighbor here in Santa Ana, is one of the most southern, most cities here in Orange County. And you'll find that there's going to be a lot of great tax revenue come in because a lot of these places that are open are in northern, northern Orange County. And Santa Ana has seen huge, vast of people coming in from San Clemente, coming from Lake Forest. You're going to see a lot of traffic coming in from all the beach cities coming around here. So I think it's great for business. I think it's great for the healing community. And also we hire a lot of people within the general vicinity. So you get, you get people making jobs too and bringing in tax money. So I think it's a win-win. Thank you, weed for the people.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber is wishing to speak? No? Anna, do we have anyone on Zoom with a phone?
Yes, caller ending in 502, you may provide your public comment.
To unmute their phone, star six. Is that correct?
Caller ending in 502, you may provide your public comment. Caller ending in 031, you may provide your public comment.
Says star six to unmute yourself, we can't hear you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening. My name is Cristiano Almonte. I am a registered nurse working at a medical spa located just across the street from the proposed Catalyst location. And I'm speaking here today to urge the Planning Commission to approve the CUP, allowing Catalyst Cannabis Company to operate its dispensary in Costa Mesa's vibrant 17th Street. I first became aware of Catalyst after they opened their location in Santa Ana and have been following their business ever since. And I've watched Elliot Lewis and his team bring their brand, culture, and energy to newly open in other cities and successfully transform a once controversial business into a point of pride for the cities that welcome them. Above all, I have witnessed how a business can be financially successful without sacrificing the dignity of their workforce by ensuring union wages and benefits for all its employees. The fact is that 17th Street is a home to one of the greatest communities of businesses in Southern California. It is a unique place where both the large and small businesses coexist and thrive together. Costa Mesa is also home to the gold standard of bars, lounges, restaurants, fitness centers, and medical spas in all of California. And it would be a great shame if we failed to allow Costa Mesa to be home to the gold standard of dispensary operations. I'm not here to say that 17th Street is in desperate need of fresh business, but instead, I'm here to urge that the city should continue to do what is best and that is to attract the best businesses to this beautiful city. Catalyst has proven itself to be the best in its respective class, so I respectfully request that you vote to approve Catalyst CUP. Thank you all for taking the time to consider this important decision and have a great night.
Thank you. Anyone else, Anna?
There's other callers.
Okay, thank you. Close the public comment portion and ask the applicant to come forward. If you've got any final comments.
There is one quick thing that I thought of that I left out that's I think important to add, and that's that in any vicinity or any municipality that we've been in, we've either been first or second to open. We pride ourselves on that. So if we are awarded a permit today, you know, for business reasons and pride and everything else and to bring the city their tax money, we're going to hustle. We've got a great construction team to be the first open cannabis business in Costa Mesa. That's our objective. We talk about it a lot and we have a track record of doing that.
Can we add to that? A really permanent application is ready or a lot of adjustments, application is ready to go?
Thank you, Elliot. Okay. Commissioners, any questions for staff? I have one that came up. Oh, did you have a question?
After you, Chair.
Okay. I meant to ask this earlier. When I visited the site, and I don't know if you've, I don't know how to reference this area, but at the, what would be the northeastern edge of the property, the parking lot, there's some operations in there that are, I guess I'd say encroaching on parking. And I wouldn't not ordinarily be too concerned. There's canopies, there's storage container. When I was there, one of the parking stalls was full of material. And then while I was still there, it was in the process of being moved into the storage container. And like I say, I wouldn't ordinarily be concerned about that. But your staff report says that there's 83 parking spaces which are required and only 77 that are there, shy, not quite 10%. That makes it more difficult. So my question is, did you observe these conditions? And do we have a condition of approval that requires the removal of those elements?
Vice Chair, there is actually quite other approvals on this, this site that actually does also include a storage container. Our staff did visit the site, did count the number of parking spaces and confirmed that what is shown on the site plan in terms of number of parking spaces is correct.
Taking into account the existence of the storage container and the canopy for the car wash detailing? You're saying those are approved uses?
The storage container and then the canopy was to support the car wash, the existing car wash.
And those are approved? And those are approved uses, you're saying?
Correct. They've been approved, the car wash has been existing, I want to say, late 50s, and then the subsequent approvals to continue supporting it was, I believe, in the 80s and 90s.
And so you subtracted the parking spaces that those uses are using from the total available, which you're saying is 77?
It's 74 existing onsite. Vice Chair? I believe 77, give me one second. Sorry, 74 parking spaces onsite in one bicycle barack, so there's 75. The, sorry, Commissioner, Vice Chair Zick, the 77 parking spaces you are referring to, that's in the staff report, is what would be the required parking demand based on the existing building square footage?
Okay. And so these uses, would you say, are approved? How is it that we have them accounted for, codified? Are they, is there a CUP that identifies them? Are there permits?
Yeah, the CUP, it was, it's all related to the off-site parking that was approved when the car wash was allowed to expand. And specifically, the off-site parking was just for employees, which was a total of six, and that was what was analyzed and discussed in the staff report.
Got it. And the storage container is related to the car wash, then?
Correct.
Okay, any other questions for staff? No? All right, I'll bring it up to the dais and see if we have a motion. Want to make a motion, just press your make motion button. Commissioner Toller.
I move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of SEQA per section 15301, an approved planning application 2129, subject to conditions of approval.
All right, and that is seconded by Commissioner Russell. Commissioner Toller, would you like to speak to your motion?
I don't have too much to say. It sounds like these guys know what they're doing. And as I say, with a lot of these, we made the rules, they're following the rules. At the end of the day, this is a store moving into an existing building, swapping out an old store for a new store. I think it's going to bring, it's street activity, I mean, besides the economic activity, obviously, it's going to be, bring street activity, bring security and safety to its neighbors, I think it's going to have a positive effect on the environment. I used to buy pogs at Creative Play. I think it's something I didn't think about, that they're going to benefit from this. But yeah, those are all my comments.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Russell, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, several weeks ago, I was quite adamant about my displeasure with the way that another property was managing, changing out tenants. And having talked to some of the tenants at this property a few weeks ago, I was quite concerned that the same thing was going to happen. So I was extremely happy to see that Mr. Ramirez sent us a letter supporting the application and that there's a solid plan for assisting him in transitioning to another, to another location. I do hope that he's able to find a place in Costa Mesa so that we don't lose a business to put in another business. But, you know, I do appreciate you and the property owner coming together to, to make some accommodation, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Commissioner Rojas, any comments?
Just want to thank the applicants for your approach and the way you're doing, and second what Commissioner Russell said as well, for your responsible management for the current tenants. That's highly appreciated.
Thank you. Commissioner Vivar, any comments?
Well, thank you for your presentation to us regarding your project, and thank you, staff, as well, for presenting the various conditions and aspects of the staff report. Unfortunately, our vote up here is binary. I wish it, I just kind of wish it wasn't, you know, like rating a project or something. We're either obligated to vote yes and support or no, and yes, yes and support or no and kind of be against it, which is a bit unfortunate because I think that when somebody sees that on paper later, it doesn't really capture what went on in commissioners' minds when they were voting on something. I'm really struggling with this one. I, I appreciate the fact that help is being given to the, to the existing business owner there. We all know that the pandemic has ravaged the small business industry, and gentrification and sort of big business is another kind of difficulty that fortunately, inner-city, the businesses are also now having to face. So while I appreciate, I do appreciate the support that's going to be given to the small business there. This, we, this didn't have to happen, we didn't have to kind of find ourselves in this position. And I understand that this isn't written in the ordinance, in the ordinance that was crafted, Measure Q, and handed down to us, the Planning Commission, to implement. I go back to Land Use Amendment 6.7 about retaining existing businesses and encouraging new business but retaining existing business. And I, again, I, I'm voting, I'm not going to support the motion, but I, that doesn't mean I don't appreciate what's being done for the existing business. And me citing this policy isn't, isn't me attempting to make policy because I understand that that is not my role as Commissioner, we're not up here to make policy. But I also believe that every ordinance that's crafted should exist with and in, within the general plan. I believe that no ordinance is above or outside of or exists in spite of the general plan. And it's unfortunate that this happens in terms of displacement, so I won't be supporting. But again, I do appreciate the help that is being given to this business because, as was said earlier by my colleague, Commissioner Russell, that hasn't happened in every instance that we've looked at here. So thank you for doing that. And that's it for me, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. I'll be supporting the motion. I'll speak to, kind of following on Commissioner Vivar's comment and Commissioner Russell's comment, one of the concerns that was raised early on in this entire process, not specific to your application, is a concern of displacement of small businesses. And it was recognized that in the free market, businesses that have a lot of cash behind them and momentum behind them can really run small businesses out just by competing for the real estate. And that's not your fault, that's the free market. There is a remedy for that, and it isn't to deny an applicant approval. The remedy is something that the city council retains, which would be to cap the number of applicant approvals in the city so that if this was more of an epidemic problem, they could stem that. So I don't hold that against you, but it's a concern we're certainly cognizant of. The other thing I wanted to mention and really pass along by way of compliment is something that the property owner told me when I met with him. He talked about a high priority to him is establishing partnerships with his tenants and you, the applicant, or the tenant, that he is valuing in this partnership. And he indicated that his success is driven by your success, he has a vested interest in your success. And I take him at his word there, that he would be looking to lease space to somebody that he feels is of value added to, to his business and to his property. So anyway, I like his approach to managing his real estate asset. Anna, please call for the question.
That motion carries 4-2 with Commissioner Vivar, Commissioner Erith voting no, and Chair Deereckel absent.
Thank you, Anna. That decision is final unless appealed to the city council within seven days. Good luck to you. So at this point, there's no old business or new business. We'll move on to departmental reports, and we'll start with you, Mr. Yang, and just give you a couple of minutes for the room to settle down before you start. And if you all could take that outside, I'd appreciate it. We still have some business to conduct. Have a good evening. Mr. Yang?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I'd like to reintroduce our transportation services manager, Ms. Jennifer Rosales. She'll talk about back-to-school night.
Great. Thank you. So we have, very exciting, we have two Walk to School Day events planned in October. The first one is Wednesday, October the 5th, where, where a big Walk to School Day event in the morning, we'll have, our police department will be involved, and half of the elementary schools in Costa Mesa will be on the first day. And then the second Walk to School Day events are scheduled for Wednesday, October 12th, so the following week, and the other half of all of the elementary schools will be participating. We'll be making announcements on social media, so excited for that, so please join if you're free. Also wanted to mention that the Pedestrian Master Plan is scheduled to come to Planning Commission. We'll be presenting this to you on October the 10th. This past June, the Active Transportation Committee reviewed the Pedestrian Master Plan and recommended the plan to move forward to the Planning Commission. So we're excited to give that presentation to you and happy to answer any questions regarding the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. So that's all for our public works reports, so we defer back to Chair.
Bill, I've got one question for you, maybe you could comment on. I had the distinct pleasure of driving down Placentia this week from Adams all the way down to 16th, and I'm exaggerating when I say it was a distinct pleasure. Could you speak to the duration of that project? And the reason why I bring it up is that was a rather lengthy interruption of an entire lane of traffic, and if I saw a lot of people working along the way, then I'd be encouraged thinking that, you know, the duration of the project would not be very long. But the work was spread out really quite a lot, and there was more roadway not being worked on than was being worked on. So could you speak to the duration of that project?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair. So currently, the project is separated into two phases. The first phase that you've witnessed is concrete parkway work along Placentia Avenue, which starts from Adams Avenue down to the south city limit, so it's quite a length. But in addition to that, if you recall during the city council meeting on Tuesday, we rejected all bids for West 19th. That project will be in conjunction with Placentia Avenue, which will do, which will concentrate on just basically the pavement work and the new striping work, which will incorporate active, active transportation elements for our active transportation plan.
So will we suffer the loss of that lane on Placentia until all of that is completed?
Until that's completed. So the thing is, the new striping and markings are being hatched out, and they'll all be implemented with, in the new project.
If you had to estimate a time, and I won't hold you to it.
In terms of time, we're looking at bidding out for the Placentia and also the West 19th project in October. So if I were to hazard a guess, we were looking at maybe starting that portion of the pavement work around maybe late January, February.
Potentially six months without that lane on Placentia.
Potentially, but the thing is, our transportation group will be looking at other alternatives to ameliorate the situation.
Okay, I appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
All right, Development Services report, Ms. Lee.
Thank you, Vice Chair Zick. I do not have a report this evening. You may recall at the last meeting, Chair Deereckel asked me to come back with some additional information and updates regarding the housing element and a few other topics. Given that you will return to the next meeting, I'd like to ask permission to defer that report to the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I forgot to ask at the beginning, do we have Mr. Preziosi on Zoom? Okay, so city attorney report, Mr. Preziosi.
Vice Chair Zick, I have no city attorney report this evening.
All right. That being the case, I will adjourn our meeting tonight until our next regularly scheduled meeting of October 10th. Thank you and good night.